There's some chairs up here. There's some chairs up front here if you want to come in. Just get out of court. Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have President, Councilmembers Anderson, Stanley, and Boyd. Councilmember Lamone is going to be a little late. And she's asked if we could move item 8A to 9H when she gets here because she wants to participate in that. Are there any changes to the agenda that you want?
Yes. We'd like to do item 9F, which is our adoption tentative budget. Dean has to leave a little bit later, so we'd like to-
Move that up?
If we could move that up to kind of 9A.
Okay.
And then items 9B, item 9D needs to be moved to two weeks from today. So when we get to that agenda item, if we do several motions with that. And then item 9E will need to be just taken off the agenda and moved to another time indefinitely.
9D?
9D. Those are only changes.
Okay. Any other changes at the council? All right. Our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Diana Anderson and the opening remarks by Ben Scandor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful this day to gather in this council meeting. We're grateful for the members of our community and for this great land in which we live. We're grateful to have so many who are so willing to serve and offer their time so selflessly to move forward the needs of our community and to address the pressing issues of our city. We pray that we might have Thy Spirit with us to guide us and direct us as we deliberate, that we might be able to do Thy will and to strengthen the friendships and the community spirit that we enjoy here in Pleasant Grove. We're grateful for the good land in which we live, or grateful for all that has blessed us with. If we created Thy, protection might be with us and our residents. We ask for these blessings in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
All right. We've talked about changes to the agenda. I'll call for a motion.
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve tonight's agenda with the movement of item 9A to the end of, no, 8A rather, to the end of the nine alphabetic series. And that we move item 9E to the first of 9A.
Sorry, 9F.
9F, pardon me. 9E will continue indefinitely. And 9D, I move that we continue for two weeks' time.
And 9A would also move with 8A?
Yes. That's a good point.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben, a second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna have an open session. If there's anything on the agenda that's not for public discussion and you have something you'd like to speak on about it, you can come up to the podium. And if there's something other than what's on the agenda and you want to speak, you can take the podium here and please state your name and address.
Mayor, I'm Bill Spence, former resident of Pleasant Grove, sorry. Teacher at Pleasant Grove Junior High. If you want to do a flag lot to get my old, my new house in, we can do that. Yeah. But we're here for a different reason than what we were here a few meetings ago when we were honored for our With People competition. There's another program that we run at the junior high called Project Citizen. And to give you a little bit of background to it, it's a program where students learn how to affect public policy. And they are involved in trying to make changes for good within the community through a variety of ways. And we've done it for many, many years at the junior high. And we've had Cindy come and visit with them and be on, I think even 12 years ago or so. I think it's been now. When we first did our first project on park improvements, we enjoyed having a good relationship with the city whenever we've had a project come up that relates to the city. We've also done projects that relate to the school for improvement. We have a group this year, it's an after-school club. And they began to look at what they would like to see improved in Pleasant Grove. And we do kind of a process of trying to narrow down a whole bunch of ideas. And they determined that they would like to work on the improvement of the streets within Pleasant Grove. And then as they did the research, they found out that there's been a recent study that's been very well completed. And so they felt like the city's right on top of the needs of this community that way. Another area of their concern though was the crosswalks. And so we had Sid Lamone come and visit with our group this year. And she gave us some great input as far as some things that we could consider. And so we've put together a letter that we would like to present. So I've got my students here. If they'll pass out those letters to members of the council. And then I'd like to have one of our students also read that letter. And we would like to ask that this might be submitted in the next newsletter, city newsletter, in relationship to, with your approval of the concern for sidewalk safety and crosswalks in particular. And so, Richard, you can do the reading here for us.
Dear Pleasant Grove residents, as students from the Project Citizen Club at Pleasant Grove Junior High, we would like to inform the citizens of the community of a law that can be found in the Utah Driver's Handbook, page 45, which states pedestrians have the right of way at intersections whether or not the crosswalks are marked by painted white lines. It also states vehicles turning right or left on a green light must yield the right of way to pedestrians who are in a marked or unmarked crosswalk. Every intersection has a crosswalk whether marked or not. This is an important issue to bring to the citizens of Pleasant Grove because we want to keep the pedestrians safe on our streets. This is especially important since more students will be on the streets during the summer. That being said, we also advise pedestrians to exercise caution while, when crossing the streets and not cause any unnecessary burdens upon drivers. We hope that both drivers and pedestrians will remember these guidelines. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Richard.
So do you have any questions for us?
I have.
Okay.
With our trail system that runs along the, what's now the Murdoch Trail, out in the canal, how do you view the crossings there? We have put up stop signs for the pedestrians and the bikers-
Right.
That indicate the right of way is with the traffic, they need to stop. I've noticed that that's dicey.
Right.
There are those that kind of risk the, you know, dodging the traffic.
Yes. Yeah, there are situations where I think there may be some exceptions just for the overall flow. And so I'm just thinking that just with the general handbook directions just for downtown type of walking and things like that, that that might be something that just citizens need to be just a little bit more aware of as far as the safety of those that are walking.
Any questions for Bill? Thank you, that's really good.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for the open session?
I'm Darryl Weaver. I spoke to you, I believe, about six months ago. And would like to readdress the putting up speed bumps on 473 North. Now with school being out, or soon to be out, my son here is with me as a scout to see the council meeting. But again, I want to bring this back up. We're still getting a lot of speeding, a lot of fast-moving vehicles both up and down the hill. And see if we can readdress that.
That's 473 North?
1180 East.
Was yours the one that the car got destroyed? Name and address, Jay?
Ah, I got you scared, don't I?
Jay Meakin, 1670 Cherokee. My comment is very similar to Bill Spence's. With all my spare time this last few weeks, I've spent some time on the Murdoch Trail. And I, there was an issue that I have with the trail and it's approaching the major intersection, the major east-west roads. Blind spots occur quite frequently. Particularly, I'm thinking of 1100 North where the resident has placed a vinyl fence. And it's a blind spot and doesn't give much time, reaction time for both cars and cyclists particularly as they're approaching that crossing. I was wondering if the city could do something looking at that planning and engineering as far as maybe putting fence restrictions or something to increase the sight distance for both the cyclists and the vehicles. Particularly those coming, driving west, coming down the hill. Because of the height difference, that seems like the east view is limited more than the west. But probably all, considering all four intersections at those positions.
So people coming to the north on the trail and people coming west on 1100, that one house on the corner that put up the vinyl fence.
Yeah. The reaction time is really limited.
There's also coming up the hill that levels out there and then continues.
Cyclists are going pretty quick and they really don't adhere to the stop sign. I talked with Jim Price from MAG about that this week in the Trans Plan 40 at MAG. But he kind of agreed that we haven't had a problem with the trail as incident as far as accidents. But we know that the vehicles are actually stopping before the bicyclists do. And because of the confusion between the bicyclists supposed to stop and not, and the vehicles stopping and not supposed to, that there may be a situation occurring.
So is there anything on the trail where it's a progression, like prepare to stop?
The line is example.
So that was my question. Diana just asked, is there anything preemptive of that stop sign that can be added there? And we can't be the only city that's having the issues on the thing. So is it a matter of having a discussion with the canal people, you know, the canal people and other cities as to, as a joint effort, what are we gonna do in this situation? But I don't think our intersections are the only ones that are probably having issues. I would say it's all the way along. So can we go back to them and say, this is a problem?
They're not, the trail design's actual standards. We have had, I mean, it's not just our problem, it's the trail system.
Right.
And it's mostly with the A-class bikers who like to speed and go.
Countdown.
So we talked about every technical need. As far as things we can do, they're done. As far as signing that type of thing on the trail.
What about speed bumps?
One solution that Mr. Price from MAG had was to possibly put lights flashing on the stop signs. Use the solar panels and just, but again, that's-
I need to see something we-
It's not the city, that's them. Right. And that's why I say if we can control from the city's standpoint outside the right of way, that might help.
Well, failure to stop for cyclists is still side of more paths, right?
I think this is more of an enforcement issue. Because we could light up the stop signs to do whatever. Those guys aren't gonna stop if they don't have to. That's what I'm saying. Right. I mean, we could, we could do some of these things. I think we can, I like the idea of, you know, being prepared to stop and something that kind of gives them a warning that there's an intersection coming up. But I think ultimately, if we're gonna get people to stop, we probably need to have an officer there and cite people as they come through.
You know, just like the letter was read previous by the non-resident.
Yeah.
And when you've got it striped as a pedestrian crossing, that's confusing to the pedestrians because that gives them the right of way.
Yes, that's correct. And so that, there's a conflict there because technically the traffic has the right of way.
Correct.
At least that's how we-
It's entirely true, Scott.
Well, so for a pedestrian-
So for pedestrians and bicyclists, you have to come to stop before you enter the right of way. And that includes the sidewalk alongside the street.
Where's the end?
But once you do, you can proceed.
Once you do, once you come to a stop, then you are a pedestrian. And vehicles on the road would have to stop as you entered the sidewalk. The problem comes from those who don't want to stop as they enter. They want to go instantly from the trail into the crosswalk and expect traffic to stop. That's where the problem's coming from. And I do agree that motorists, there seems to be a little confusion there because they're seeing someone coming or something and suddenly it's thinking, oh, I've gotta stop. But everyone is required to stop before they enter the sidewalk. There's two intersections there. The trail intersects the sidewalk, so I could be riding my bike down the sidewalk on 1100 North. And I would have the right of way over somebody on the trail because they're the ones that have the stop sign. It is appropriately marked. I've watched lots of people cut it very close to. You know, I drive 400 North in Linden and the fence there makes that far more difficult place to see than any of the ones in our city. As additional warning, with the exception of three locations in Pleasant Grove where we set the gates back, you have to navigate the gate on the trail too. So you're already targeting a pretty four-foot wide opening if you're on a bike to get through there. So there is an additional thing that's letting you know you're at near six.
I guess I'm just saying, we can coordinate, but let's do what we can from the city's standpoint and put things underway to improve.
Well, from the city's side, I'd love to see us pursue some enforcement if there's a possibility there. Just either by issuing warnings one day and then if there's a few offenders actually citing the cyclists. They can probably hitch a break.
Jack Freeman, 450 East, 100 North. On that, I was up in the east area by the Murdoch Trail. And when I go up in that area, as I'm approaching the trail, I start slowing down. And I'm looking for bicyclists. And the other day, there was one, we were approaching about same time. There was cars behind me, but I just slowed down and stopped. And the cyclist went on through and then I'm gone. So is it appropriate for us in our motorcars to stop when we see a cyclist there? Because the cyclist was gonna go on through.
What they can say is the obligation to the cyclist is to stop at the stop sign and then enter into the-
Yeah, but I would prefer stopping as a motorist and, because I know what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna stop.
Well, so our-
So I'm asking, am I in violation by stopping? Oh, okay. Then I'm all right that way.
I think saving lives is a good thing. Personally, I mean, there's being right and then there's being dead right.
Well, there were, there were other motorists there that didn't indicate they were gonna slow down or anything else. And I thought, I would rather slow down and stop than to be right.
There is danger, I've noticed, with stopping your vehicle.
Yeah.
There's oncoming traffic. They may not have the same intention to stop. And then you've given the impression that here comes this whatever. And, you know, you can create the, you can create a condition where the other motorists might not stop and then-
Right. And so I just wanted to clarify for myself, what should I be doing?
Once the person on the trail is in the intersection after they've stopped, then they're a pedestrian until they clear the intersection. But if they're approaching and you're approaching, there's a stop sign on both sides. They need to stop. And the cars do have the right of way. And then once they have a clear path, then they can take their journey.
And if I, if I remember clearly, on some approaches to the Murdoch, there are some signs stating that there is a trail ahead. So that as a motorist, I can be looking for joggers or runners or bikers.
Like a deer crossing sign?
Yeah, kind of thing.
Yeah, they don't stop, I've noticed.
No. The other, the other thing I wanted to bring up is either a week ago or before, someone came up and talked to you about dogs on the trail. When I was a youth, I had a very frightening experience with a dog trying to attack me. And there was a lot of people around and no one did anything. And so I was glad that person stood up and talked about it because if I were biking on the trail and a dog were to charge after me, that would really concern me because I've had a very frightening experience with that. Because you can get mauled real quick, in a few minutes, a few seconds, and you don't have time to respond. And to tie in with that, I'm seeing a lot of residents now enjoying having their dog, members of their family, they take them for walks and everything. I was wondering, in the city, don't we have an ordinance about picking up your dog's presence along the way?
Yes.
Because when I come by the library, that's used as a dumping lot constantly. And I think if people are gonna have their animals, then they need to do like I used to do. I used to carry a little bag with me. And I would have those ziplock bags. After she was done, I'd thank her and I'd take my tongs and pick it up and put it in my bag. And when I got home, I'd dispose of it. Could the city in your paper maybe remind, remind owners as they're walking their dogs? Because I know a lot of residents are very fed up with having to go out and clean up after someone else's dog. And so I thought I would ask that because that person had brought up the thing about the leash and everything. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I think we're evolving as a society here in Pleasant Grove. We're coming to the realization that as we convert more and more from a farming community to a veteran community to a city, you know, suburban area, that there's going to be this interaction between dogs and all these other things that haven't had to be dealt with before.
And bikers.
Making progress. So, Theo, if you want to look into the specific issue on 400, or excuse me, on 1100 and the crossing there, that maybe there's something we can work out with that neighbor. But the rest of it, I think it is going to take all of us and getting used to the laws and obeying. Scott, did you have a-
I'm just gonna say, we can evaluate all those intersections, take another look and see if an additional sign somewhere might help slow people down a little bit.
Okay.
And really just keep safety in mind and look at those.
And Mike, when is your next post in the newsletter?
I'm not sure.
Not sure? Who's that next one?
Well, we can, I mean, we can put a reminder. It doesn't necessarily have to be local to the virus, but we can put a reminder on picking up the dog's weight.
That sounds good. And the leash?
Yes. Now, the leash stuff, we're gonna, we met on that the other day. We'd like to make recommendations to change that in our code. And so we're gonna have that in front of you.
All right. Anyone else for the open session?
I'm sorry. I use the trail a lot. Molly Andrew, 1107 Sandy Drive. But instead of spending money on signs, can't we just have additional enforcement? Mike, who enforces that? Oh, sorry, Sheep Smith. Who enforces that?
You know what, honestly? The additional enforcement is going to be a lot more expensive than-
Than the sign? I just think they're gonna blow by the signs. They blow by people on the canal, a sign's not gonna-
The reality is, we can do enforcement if it's not gonna be that popular. It will cause some cover problems. And we honestly just, right now, we don't have the manpower.
To do it?
So it will be over time issues and then trying to reach the citizens.
Which is huge. I just think a sign is, yeah.
I was just gonna say, the volunteer police, this guy is on the trail regularly. And he's the one that I see that does the line share and stuff there. He's there on Saturdays.
So is there any way we can talk to Jason Kelly maybe and have the bike club get involved somehow?
Sure.
Courtesy would be awesome.
Yeah. I think, I think there's two different things at play here, right? One is there's the laws that you create to, so that people can live together in harmony. Then there's the obeying the laws, which is a different issue.
Yeah.
And then there's the enforcing of the laws, which costs everybody money. So somehow, people just need to obey the law.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
And be courteous to one another.
I think if we can come up with a better way, maybe as we're talking about, you know, every city along the Murdoch Canal. And I know that you all have problems with that. I've spoken with chiefs from the other cities who are sort of, you know, what are you guys doing? They're having these, they're having Santa's specials. So maybe we add into that component an education, you know, with all the cities involved, not just us trying to solve the problem. Because in reality, it's the same biker that, you know, keeps running our stop signs, they're feeling the whole trip. I mean, these guys are going, they're doing major miles along that trail. So it's a problem with every city. So it's not just Pleasant Grove doing the education. It's not just Pleasant Grove doing enforcement. We need to get together with all the cities.
I want to automate the enforcement, put cameras on all those signs. Roger?
Roger Green, 665 East Battle Creek. I would just, I've noticed that there's gates on all of those crossings and to the side of, there's an opening. That opening, does that have to be that bigger or is it at the minimum that it can be now?
They're actually looking at widening the gates just a little bit so they get the, like the razors or gaiters, the small utility- They're actually looking at widening the gates just a little bit so they get the, like, the razors or the gaiters, the small utility four-wheel drive things down. So they're spending a lot of time holding, holding cases, get vehicles through there. So they're looking at actually making it a little bit wider.
This is for the county to.
Yeah, this is for county maintenance, so you don't have to do anything to pay attention.
Okay.
That's been a discussion, it hasn't, hasn't been decided yet.
Thanks, Wes. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the open session. Thanks for the comments and appreciate the input. We have a couple of consent items. Any questions or discussion on those? Oh, we'd like to recognize Sid Lamone has arrived.
Yes, for the record, Councilor Lamone has arrived. And thank you for your contribution to our wedding ceremony.
No problem. Thank you. Okay. I'll entertain a motion on the consent items.
I mean, the motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda items.
Motion by Sid, second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number seven. To consider for approval, the appointment of Lynn Walker as Monkey Town Neighborhood Chair. We did not ask Lynn to fill out a application since we know them. I thought that might be a lot of. Thank you so much. Is there any discussion on that?
We are grateful that you're still involved, Lynn. Thank you.
Good to be here.
Then I'll entertain a motion on that.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we appoint Lynn Walker as the Monkey Town Neighborhood Chair.
It all begins there.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben, second by Sid. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Now there's an available chair.
Thank you. We've already modified the agenda. Shall we just continue in the order that we've modified it?
It's okay if we do the tentative budget before Dean has to leave, and then we can go into the city council.
Dean?
I really have a presentation on this today. We've had, I think, four or five different budget sessions. And really what we're doing today is just adopting the tentative budget, which just means that the budget is put together in a form. It's available, it's available on the website for the public to look at as well. It's been there since, I think, Thursday or Friday of last week. So all the changes and all the things that we've talked about during the course of this is kind of culminated in this document. So my plan today is just to present it to you, see if you got any questions. Realizing again, to adopt the tentative budget isn't formally adopted. We'll have a time in the middle of June when we'll actually adopt the budget. The public hearing for this will be the last meeting in May, correct? May 26th would be the day of the public hearing. So anybody in the public is, it's available on the website. They'd be welcome to contact me and ask any questions that they have as well.
And Dean is really accessible if people have questions about the budget. Really good with the way public accounting is handled for a city.
And I'm happy to meet with them.
A lot of questions, so. Any questions for Dean or discussion on the tentative budget? If not, I'll entertain a motion. This is a resolution.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2014-012, tentatively adopting the Pleasant Grove City Budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015, and ending June 30th, 2016, which includes the Pleasant Grove Re-Development Agency Tentative Budget and providing for an effective date. And also, the resolution should be 2015-012. Sorry, it should be, oh, of course, 2015-012. That's the resolution.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Cindy and a second by Diana. Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next item of business. Okay, number nine B. To consider for approval, a final plat for a two-lot subdivision called Sidwell Subdivision, located at approximately 950 East, 900 South in the R19 zone.
Okay, Councilman Mayor, we have a proposed plat that has been approved at the planning commission level preliminarily, and is coming forward to you in the final format. This is property that was recently, or not originally, but it was divided illegally. In other words, outside of the city's subdivision process. Ownership was transferred from a part of the portion, a part of the property, from one property owner to another. The subdivision as proposed will legalize this subdivision of the property. So on 900 South, about 975 East, is this large two-acre piece here. There is a home on the parcel right here. And it, the ownership difference has occurred about right here. There are some other agricultural buildings down in that area. So that shows the line there in the zoning, which is in the R19 zoning district. And this is the plat as proposed, so that we will still have significantly large agriculturally-used property where they intend to build another home. So this has met the zoning requirements, and our recommendation is that you approve it, subject to all final engineering requirements.
Okay, questions for Kim?
So have they looked at any future development of the land? Or they, you know, I just see so many times, people forget about future changes that they may want to make, you know, if this is all.
Right, and we, and I apologize, we don't have the vicinity plan shown here. But as you can, let's see, I'll back up. You can see here, there is a road alignment right here to the north, so that it could potentially extend further down through the property. So what we will do is they bring forward their plans for a home to be built, that it will allow for a future extension of the roadway, even though the owners have said they don't intend to do anything there. But if in the future, something should change, then that would allow for that roadway to go through.
Other questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that the city approve a final plat for a two-lot subdivision called Sidwell Subdivision, located approximately 950 East to 900 South in the R19, single-family residential zone, adopting the findings and conclusions of the staff reports and subject to all final engineering.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben and a second by Sid. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, item nine C is to consider for approval, a final plat for a five-lot subdivision called Newman Estate Subdivision, located at approximately 700 North, 700 East in the R19 zone.
Okay, so another final plat that has been approved by planning, or the preliminary plan has been approved by planning commission. This is a flag lot subdivision that will create five lots out of property that currently has two. As shown here, there is a bulb of the intersection of 700 North and 700 East, where the existing homes have their access through here. The proposal is to utilize this property to the rear in a flag lot situation. Currently, that is in a R19-zoned area. So this shows the location of the new lots, three lots being accessed with the turnaround up to here. Both of these lots here will keep their access onto the roadway as is currently. And that shows the existing homes right there. It has gone through the review process without any major challenges. And so we recommend that it be approved, subject to final engineering.
Any questions on this one?
Fire's okay, shelter movement's okay.
Yes, has been reviewed by the fire department. Any others? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the final plat for the five-lot subdivision called Newman Estate, subdivision located approximately 700 North, 700 East in the R19, single-family residential zone.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Cindy, a second by Sid. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, just so the public knows, a lot of these, well, most of these articles were discussed last week. So there is discussion that goes on. We just had them in our packets from last week, so.
Yeah, you'll, you'll see that later when we get into number 12. That's where we discuss the next meeting. Okay, item nine D has been continued to the 19th.
I'll make that motion formally, Mayor, that we continue item nine D to the 19th for two weeks. The approval of the 68 lot mixed housing development site plan and basing plan called Garden Grove, located at approximately 15 South, 1300 West in the garden, in the Grove Zone.
Motion by Ben, second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. unanimous also. Right.
So who else agreed with nine E as well?
Item nine E, yes. Continue that as well. Continue that one indefinitely.
I'll make that motion as well, Mayor, that we continue item nine E, the approval of the 68 lot mixed housing development final plat at the same location, continue indefinitely.
Okay, motion by Ben, second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we have handled item nine F, which is adopting our tentative budget for the next fiscal year. Item nine G is to consider for adoption, a resolution number 2015-13013, authorizing the mayor to declare several items as surplus, which include 1998 Pierce-Arrow Pumper Fire Truck, 1994 Ford F-350 Type III chassis for an ambulance, a 1999 Ford F-350 chassis for an ambulance, a 2004 Ford F-350 chassis for an ambulance, railroad crossing material, rail ties, connection hardware, and miscellaneous railroad-related items, structural metal items for demolished, from demolished buildings, rebar from reclaimed concrete miscellaneous, miscellaneous building items, steel pipes for steam and air piping, copper wire, reclaimed concrete miscellaneous items, fuel tanks, steel bins, transformers, and other minor salvage items related to the pipe plant operation, and directs that the, that they be disposed of according to the city's policy for disposing of surplus property and provide for an effective date. Any questions or discussion on this item? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mike, can you, or Mayor, can you explain the process, or Tina or Scott, about what happens after it's officially surplus?
Sure. Let's ask the staff to do that.
For the public. Well, the automobile items are going to be taken to an auction house that we have a contract with, and they'll sell it at auction and give us the proceeds. Part of the railroad material is reclaimed stuff that's coming from the pipe plant property. And that's part of a contract, a solid contract we have with an individual. They will value that once it's all removed. And hopefully, we're not sure exactly what it's gonna work out to be, but if there's an excess, then we'll get the money back on that or offset the contract price for the demolition.
Does the money received, what budget do those go into? Does it go into their, the budget that purchased that, or does it go into general fund? Where does that go, is there a question?
Just general fund. Well, the pipe, I'm sorry, I was thinking of the.
And the fires, that goes into fires?
The purchase fund, it should stay with that.
I just want to make sure the public understands where.
Absolutely.
That money is going.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I made the motion that we adopt Resolution 2015-013 as read previously by the mayor.
Motion by Sid?
Second.
Second by Diana. By voice, Diana?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, we're gonna come back now to item eight A. And this is the applicant for incoming city council member. And then item nine A would be to administer the oath of office to the incoming city council member. This is vacated, the position vacated by Jay Meacham earlier last month when he left the council. And so the position would serve until the end of 2015. And then whoever gets elected in November would seek that, the seat for four years after that. Tina, do you want to help everyone understand the official process we're gonna go through?
Sure. The midterm vacancy process is mandated by statute. It's found in the election code and the Utah state law. It is basically an opportunity, it provides with notice and an opportunity for those who are interested in applying to submit a letter of application outlining their qualifications. There are some minimum requirements. They have to be residents of Pleasant Grove for 365 days prior to them taking office. And they have to be registered voters. Other than that, there aren't any other qualifications that are necessarily set out in the statute.
Okay. We have, we received in our packets this. Can you describe how that works?
Okay, so the manner in which, in order to make it fair for the manner in which the people are going to be presenting their remarks this evening, we have used an objective criteria that the state puts out. And it just assigns a number to a letter of the alphabet. So the person's last name starts with a T, they have the number three assigned to them. So that's what that is. Does that make sense?
So we'll randomize fairly the order of presentation tonight.
Right, so nobody has an advantage of being first or last in terms of us picking it. It's just a random selection.
So we discussed it, and I think we're going to have each person who is applying for the open seat come up and state their name. And then they have five minutes to express whatever you want to express about your reasoning or qualifications, whatever it is you want to put forth to fill the vacancy.
Is there someone acting there?
Yes. Tina, would you keep time on that?
And then following the five minutes, Mayor, will we have opportunities to ask you questions?
Yes, we can ask questions. If there's any, if there's a need to have any executive session, it would be only to discuss the capacity or ability of the individual or individuals to serve. There's no, there's no allowance to make a decision about the council position out of the public. That must be made in this meeting. So any executive session that would be required, that the council asks for, would only be to discuss the character, professional competence, or mental health of an individual. All right, so do we have anyone whose last name begins with a C?
We already.
Oh, you already put him in order? Great. All right, Scott Richards, you are up first.
Do you need my address? Scott Richards, 4354 North, 900 West. Mayor and City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to meet before you and express an interest in filling the vacant seats for the city council position. I've been attending these meetings for probably, I've lived in the city for eight years now almost. Probably attended seven of those years, previously when you were mayor, then through mayor calls, and now back here again. So I've been very familiar with what's going on. I've been active in my community up in the Manila neighborhood as well. as well, and been involved in some activities up there. And I've been on the planning commission since two thousand twelve, serving as its chair in two thousand fourteen. Uh, so I've been very familiar with some of the processes and, and, um, things that have been going on in the city and where the, uh, the, uh, issues that are facing our city. Uh, as a, as a, I am not seeking, uh, uh, office and, you know, in, in the current, upcoming election. Uh, so I'd be a non-political appointment. Yeah, but I feel like I can, I can hit the ground running in a lot of areas. I know each one of you can work well with you. Uh, I appreciate the, the opportunity to do so. My feelings about the city, uh, you know, I've, I've lived in, uh, a fair amount of cities in, in my, in my life, and, and I felt, uh, very, very at home here. And feel like an impact, and we have a community that we can, that I feel like can add to on, add to, and also to, uh, remember the heritage. Uh, I've read a lot of history on the, on the city and remember the heritage and what, what brought, brought about this city and some of the sacrifices that were made and the culture that is here. Obviously, we have a different city than we had a hundred years ago, or fifty years ago, or even five years ago. Uh, you know, as we evolve into things and, and so, but I think it's important that we make the right decisions. I've been involved in the planning, and then that we remember the culture that we have here and, and also, uh, the heritages that we have here as well. That, that doesn't get lost in our future planning and such. And so as a result of that, I would like to conclude my remarks and, and, uh, and seek, uh, for a vote there within the council.
Any questions for Scott?
I have a couple, but I plan to ask of all the candidates, and you have the unfortunate position of having to tackle them first. But the thing that matters most to me in an elected official or an appointed vacancy in an elected capacity is what your process is for making decisions. And so I want to hear from people there, the process and principles, how they would come to a decision. If Diane and I vote one way, and Sid and Cindy vote another way, and you're the tiebreaker vote, how are you gonna approach that challenge?
Well, I, I could utilize the same, uh, process that I use in planning commission. Uh, I go visit the sites, you know, that we, uh, that were addressed in, in that particular meeting. Uh, I look at it visually. Um, I look at potential issues and, uh, and some of my professional background will, will bring up some questions as well. And, uh, and there, as a result of that, when it comes to the presentation, I can think of questions and thoughts and things that I would never have thought of if, if I hadn't looked into those things, uh, visually or, or read, you know, the, the concerns, you know, whatever the issue is, but, uh, but I think I would approach it that way. I think my point of view is would be to get as much information as I possibly can. Um, and not rely upon, uh, not, not getting involved in the emotion of it, although that's hard to do sometimes when you're in city council. Um, but to actually get the facts and, and to make sound decisions based upon the facts and what's going on. And, uh, and then also, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. And my other question is, what do you think the greatest need in Pleasant Grove is right now?
You know, I think the greatest need right now, and we've got a lot of needs. Um, you know, and I think we're addressing some of those things. You know, a lot of people say that, uh, you know, we've got a public safety building, we've got roads, we've got, uh, whatever, you know, in, in that issue. But I think, I think the greatest need is, is to make sure that we, as leadership, uh, bring about a, um, an environment in which people can feel, even though we may not agree, that, uh, we can continue to move on the process to be able to feel, uh, that at least we're united in, in, in what's good for the city. We may not always agree, but we, you know, work together and try to build alliances there. Uh, not necessarily compromise correct principles or wherever else, but to, you know, to meet those needs so that we don't have office, the opposition's not afraid against each other. Uh, I think that's the greatest need right now, and I think as we accomplish that, we can accomplish a lot of things, uh, in, in, in doing that. As, uh, as, as if, if I was selected as council member, I would work towards that.
Any other questions?
Um, I have one, and I'll be fair and ask the same with everyone. Um, what does the time commitment look like to you? And is that, I mean, does that affect, um, your life at all?
Well, I'm, I'm here at city council, I mean, seventy-five percent of the time anyway. So, you know, that, that, I know, I know time involves a lot more than that. Um, I'm, I'm in and about the city as well, and, uh, you know, I, I feel that I could, I could take care of that time. I have supported my wife and my family, uh, to accomplish that, uh, you know. There's obviously times when, 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 you know, there's, we, it's not always possible. You know, we may have to excuse ourselves temporarily, but that's not an issue at all. I would be here, if you look at my attendance in planning commission, I think it's pretty nearly a hundred percent in the last three years.
Any others?
Thanks for the questions.
All right, thanks, Scott. Kevin Peterson.
Boy, we're number two. Um, you've read, I assume, the summary I sent in for my application. I really don't have a whole lot to add to that. I am a project manager, and I am a PACS administrator, which means I do computer stuff. You talked about it, Reginald. I'm also a nurse. So public safety and public awareness about safety is also a big issue with me. Um, I was raised here in Pleasant Grove. I ran away for a while, came back. And as far as decision-making processes go, let's take an example. Let's take the crosswalks in Murdoch Trail. I walk the trail, I run the trail, I also ride the trail. It is part of my, contrary to public appearance here, how I commute to work in the morning and for home from work at night. Um, there are inconsiderate pedestrians, there are inconsiderate dog walkers, there are inconsiderate bicyclists. This trail doesn't solve that, it just shows them they're out there. If the purpose of the trail is to get people out and moving, then I would assert that it's a, a good effort and it's doing well. I see a lot of people out and running around. However, I would also assert, this may not be a popular point of view, that no one stops at any intersection, pedestrians, runners, or bikers. You don't see a pedestrian walking along and come to a complete stop for three seconds at the intersection. They gauge the traffic and they keep on walking. Now, if the effort is at every intersection is to gauge the traffic, you're not gonna stop anybody from going across there without a red light, gauge both, traffic both ways. However, if the effort is for safety, there are actions that could be taken. I, uh, you could put fisheye mirrors on opposing blind corners. Um, I also realize that would become targets for bullets late at night. But, uh, we do have bullet-resistant mirrors, but that would increase the safety, particularly on those blind corners. So, um, there are several points of views. We take in a lot of different topics, and that's generally where I go. I try to find the other side of the, of the fisheye. Um, in my job as project manager, um, I also gauge a lot of this stuff as two priorities, what's important, what isn't important, what costs money, what doesn't cost money, and I, I'm very familiar with the project manager's triangle, time, money, and resources. You can't break any one of those. So, um, I originally sent my letter in just to be a voice to assert that the need was there. Um, I'm not gonna make myself a lifetime politician. If, if I can help out, be glad to. If not, see you on the streets.
Or the canal.
Or the canal. Questions?
Did you get all three questions answered?
We're glad you came back to BG after you talked about what they come. But you spoke directly to the processes, um, my other question was the greatest need you could see in our city?
From my point of view, water and housing. That is why I put in my application the importance of pushing zero scape. This is not talking about putting cacti in every front yard, but there are low-flow, low-demand, uh, plants that we place in front yards, let people have their backyards for letting their kids run around. But, uh, I think water is a, a highlighted issue.
Do I have a one time commitment?
I, I am on call at times, and so the hospital will take precedence, but I, I understand the commitments. I'm willing to donate that time.
Can I ask a question that's not been asked of Scott? I can ask Scott, too. Will you need to ask the exact same questions to everyone?
There's no rule about that.
Okay.
If you don't ask Scott, I'll ask him after, okay?
So, um, if not selected for city council, are you willing to serve in other areas of the city?
Yes, although picking up waste off of the canal is really gonna be difficult.
I love your sense of humor. Thank you. We will not have you do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for an honest answer.
Anyone else? Thank, thank, Kevin, are you? All right, Dustin Phillips?
Hi, I'm Dustin Phillips, twenty-two thirty-two north, fifteen sixty west in BG. Um, I moved to Pleasant Grove about seven years ago. Um, been involved in the community since then. I served with both April and Sherry on the library board. Um, and enjoyed the opportunity. We've come to love the Pleasant Grove environment. Um, lived in a lot of different communities and a lot of different parts of the country, and, and we've fallen in love. I've got, uh, three kids, all in BG Junior High and, and high school, and, uh, just enjoy the aspect there. Um, I'm a banker by trade. So to Diana's, uh, question, are you familiar with banker's hours? I've got time. Beyond that, uh, um, to, to Ben's question, the first question, I took my oldest son back to Washington DC, uh, about a year ago, just as a father-son opportunity to spend some time. And one of the highlights of my, uh, time within there was a chance to visit the Supreme Court, uh, office. They were in deliberation, and we were able to see, uh, the presentation, and couldn't tell you a word about what was discussed, or what the case was, or what it meant. But after that presentation, we, we went through the tour of the, the building. And I don't remember which, uh, justice it was, but there was a, a film clip. And he talked about when they go to make a decision, when they, they do their determinations, one of the key points for him is, is that he didn't have a decision made when they went in. One of the, I think the question was, you know, do you ever get your mind changed effectively by, by the points brought by the, the attorneys? Um, and, and his answer was, was awesome for me, in the sense that, that rarely does his mind get changed, but that's because rarely did he go in with his mind made up. And I think the idea is to be open-minded and, and to be reflective, uh, do the research, it was, as was discussed before, so you're familiar with the situation, but you're open to new information. In our political environment, there's so much, um, criticism of the flip-flopping term. But I don't have a problem with that if it's based on new information. Uh, if you learn new things, you've gotta be humble enough to recognize that you've learned new things, and it's okay to change your view based on new information. So I think that's the process I would use. Uh, greatest need, I, I'd concur with the water. Not that we necessarily need more water, but to plan and prepare and, and recognize that that's a, a critical resource to be cognizant of.
Questions? Maybe you stated them, I didn't quite understand, but, uh, have you, you've served with the library board. Have you participated in other areas of the city?
You know, I, I haven't from a public standpoint. I, I guess my, my experience as a banker is, uh, lending. Uh, so I'm, I'm pretty involved in understanding and following different developments and, and progress in that sense. Um, so it's important to me to, to be able to be aware of what's going on and, and watching what the needs are and, and making wise decisions as to what those, those plans are for development.
Looking at the mayor's question, Dustin, I saw you today at, uh, Chamber of Commerce, and do you attend a lot of those?
You know, I, I was a fill-in there for the Chamber of Commerce, uh, but I've certainly been involved in different things similar to, to Chamber. Basically getting involved in, in that since I was involved with Rotary for quite a long time. I actually got shipped out to the Saratoga Springs branch of our bank, um, about three years ago. So I don't spend as much time in, in this part of the county. But, but yeah, getting involved in Rotary and, and Chamber in, in this area is something I've certainly done.
I was impressed to read about six years of service on the library board. I've loved my time, but I spend a lot of rewards.
I'm sure the planning commission is similar, but there's probably not a whole lot of people that do their entire term.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Bon Mail.
Bon Mail, fifty north, thirteen hundred east, and he is my banker out in Saratoga Springs. Um, just, I thought the best thing to do is to give kind of a background, uh, for you, 'cause I know all of you, I've talked to all of you. I've been an entrepreneur since I was a small child, uh, doing lots of different things. My first job after I graduated from college, I worked as a safety inspector for an insurance company. So basically the same as an ocean inspector. And I got hired because of the vast experience that I've had in lots of different things while I was growing up, whether it be farming, or job shops, uh, printing operations, lots of different things, including live party. I did that for about eight years, and then I decided to follow my dream, my passion, and that was to get into real estate as a real estate investor and as a Realtor and broker. I spent twenty, about twenty-five years as a Realtor, and part of that time was a broker. And for the last thirty-five-plus years, I've been a real estate investor and slash developer. I have dealt with a lot of city councils in various states and cities. I have dealt with a lot of different building departments as well. Uh, some have been good experiences, some of them have been not-so-good experiences. I think this gives me a lot of perspective on how the cities can work better with the community to build a good relationship. So I think this experience is valuable. Like Scott, I have no plans to run for the seat this fall. I, I think that it would be who, me, to not do that. I think it'd be, you know, to serve for the interim and then step down. As far as my community involvement, all of you know I've attended some of the meetings. I have spoken with you about my opinions on things. Whether it agreed with your opinion or not, you know, that's not always the same. I have been a caucus delegate for District Eight for the last two terms, and I have really enjoyed the opportunity of getting to talk face-to-face with those that we choose to represent us on the county and the state level. To kind of answer some of the other things, um, as of last Friday, uh, we sold our Carquest Auto Parts business out in Saratoga Springs. I still own the building, but I don't own the business anymore. Sorry. So that will free up about fifty to sixty hours a week, okay? So I will have time. I still am heavily involved with my development out there and with all of our rental properties and that, but that's very flexible. And then I thought about how to maybe explain to you how I feel about the importance of understanding things and how they, things take place. And I thought of an experience that I had with my two oldest boys many years ago. Uh, the three of us were sitting home alone, and we turned on the TV, and the Miss America pageant came on. Okay, being boys, we decided to watch. As we were watching, I started noticing the comments that my boys were making, and so I asked them, I said, okay, each of us take a piece of paper, and I want you to write down which of the five young ladies you think is, are the most beautiful. In other words, you're the judge, okay? That was an eye-opener for me. Mike chose five, Jeff chose five, and I chose five. Fifteen maximum different people. We had thirteen. That told me that it's very, very important for us to understand that other people have their opinion, and we need to respect that. Doesn't mean that they're right or that they're wrong, but we need to respect their opinion, and we need to take and work with that to understand it. I think in addressing any of the issues that come before the city, it's important to gain as much information as possible, and then just discuss the different opinions. 'Cause I have my opinions, but that doesn't mean I'm always right. So with that said, uh, I am ready, willing, and able to serve if selected. Questions?
Questions, keep on.
I'd like to answer the questions, and usually so.
Okay.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Frank Mills.
Frank Mills, four sixty-six east first south, lived in Pleasant Grove all my life. I started, uh, with Pleasant Grove City, uh, almost forty years ago as a volunteer fireman. I served just twenty-eight years on the. I served just 28 years on the volunteer fire department, served as a captain and a chief. I worked at Allred Builder Supply and then I started full, I, excuse me. I took time during the 70s to serve on the city council. Served eight years as a city councilman with the city council. And then in 1983, I began full-time employment with Pleasant Grove City as a building inspector, public works director, and city administrator at the same time. And then the last 10, 12 years is just the city administrator. I'm familiar with a lot of the things that are taking place in Pleasant Grove. I am proud to say that I come from Pleasant Grove, even though at times, just like all of you, may not agree with what takes place. But that's what makes the world go round. I served as 10 years as the chairman for Strawberry Days. I've served as, I've served as the city's representative for 10 or 12 years on the Timpanogus Special Service District Board. I've served on several state water boards. But my real love is in Pleasant Grove City. Councilman Stanley, you ask how we would go, how I would go about or how we would go about coming up with decisions. And let me just use, take for example, if we had an issue coming up, as you've seen tonight with some plans, subdivisions and that with the community development department. Myself, and I don't think anyone, any other elected official is up on everything that is the code and what needs to be done to meet the requirements for a development. I would work very closely, first of all, and get all my information that I get to make sure is legal, make sure it fits the plan, and work with the staff. And then, when we come to the city council meeting and the votes need to be taken, listen to any new information that's presented to us there, and then make the decision. If it's a tie, it's, you know, it's a tie, but you have to make the decision on what you've been able to learn. And a lot of that is going to have to be relied on from the staff. As far as what I see is the needs in the city today, the needs in the city today are exactly the same as were needed back in 1973. Annette and I were gone for three and a half years. And I'll tell you this, it wasn't pleasant to read what was happening in Pleasant Grove as far as the community was concerned. And somewhat is still happening, but the same thing was happening in 1963. A new public safety building was needed. I was given the task of coming up with a way to build a new public safety building and the funding, and we did it. We brought the people together that needed to work with us on it, and we had a public safety building. Roads, and right now, roads and utilities are near and dear to my heart because I helped make them the way they are. And one of the assignments we had was Fifth North, Grove Creek in Pleasant Grove City. That street was about 24 to 26 feet wide, had no curb gutter and sidewalk. Utilities were old, it was deteriorated, all the way from First East to 1300 East approximately. We were able to be, bring the neighborhoods together there. And that was the first thing that you have to remember, is to involve the people that are going to be affected. So we involved the people that lived along Fifth North. And we were able to complete that road with curb and gutter, asphalt, new utilities, including storm drain and irrigation system. And the property owners were behind it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give a percentage of 90%. And it went very smoothly. We had the same thing happen out on 1100 North. So it's the same, it's the same issues as you're facing today. But the thing that we have to do is involve the people that elected us to serve in the position that we're serving in. That's who we're, that's who we're working for and coming up with the answers for them and listen to them. Far as the time commitment, with your wife, Annette, she realized for 30 years while I worked for the city that was 24/7. I'm in a position right now that it can be 24/7 if it was necessary. I'm willing to put whatever time is necessary. I'm willing to attend whatever meetings are necessary to help lay the foundation so that the city can move forward and repair some of the damage that has taken place.
Any questions for Frank?
Is there anybody in this city that know, or anybody in this entire world that knows more about Pleasant Grove than you? It's hard to imagine that there is.
Many, many.
How you can give a shout out to you and Von Boe for your time at BYU. Do you still sing the Cougar Bites song?
Yes. I'm a loyal Cougars, okay.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Hey, Stephen Wood.
Good evening, I'm Steve Wood, 1319 West, 800 North. So I'm relatively new to Pleasant Grove, having moved here 359 days ago. I, this is the first time I've been here, so it's probably going to be a little bit different for me than it would be for anybody else who is currently applying. But I think that the fact that I come from, and most of my life has been spent on the East Coast, a completely different part of the country, brings a completely different perspective to what's going on. So I think that one of the most important things that's going on right now is that Pleasant Grove needs to manage to ride the wave that is coming through Utah and Utah County specifically. For example, I'm pretty woefully disappointed in the digital infrastructure in this city. We have fiber lines running underneath our town. There's fiber line right over there on the other side of the street. And there's no access to it right now. We're not currently enabled to tap into that. If we try to call and get a hookup to a fiber line, we'll be told no. Now, if we actually go and access that fiber and bring it to all the houses in the area, if we follow the trajectory that the property values have increased down in Provo and Salt Lake City, we can, I've done the math on this, we can expect about an annual increase in property tax revenue from about half a million dollars. And the cost, if we follow the same cost projections to install, we can, obviously can't use Provo because Google bought it for a dollar. Now, if we follow the Kansas City example, it costs them about 84 million in order to implement fiber to 159,000 households. That breaks down to a little over $500 a house. So since we only have, at least by my most recent statistical projection, about 10,000 housing units in Pleasant Grove City, that would come to about, you know, five, like $5 million, $5.5 million-ish. Since we have an increase in property tax revenue at a half a million dollars a year, that would probably pay for itself in about 10 years. So we could do that without too much difficulty. And that would increase our property values for everybody in the city, making sure that everybody is wealthier. So we would have additional sales tax and revenue as a result of the wealth effect. Now additionally, since we would have that fiber access, we would be able to negotiate with, say, Cedar Hills in order to resolve the 4,000 North sewer crisis by allowing them access to our fiber lines in exchange for allowing our residents access to sewer. So there's a lot of ancillary benefits that can come from something like as simple as that. And also, since we know that we need a new public safety building, pretty desperately, look at the walls, we can use the additional revenue to not only pay for that, but if we need a immediate surge of money, we can follow an example from, say, Nevada and start issuing a lodial title. Now, I don't know how much you all know about a lodial title, but basically the premise is that, at least the way it was implemented in Nevada, was that a owner of a property would prepay the entire property tax value for the expected duration of their ownership of the property, which is generally given as their expected lifetime. So this is one way that seniors are protected against future property tax increases because once you own the property with the lodial title, you never have to pay a property tax again. And since we would be getting all of that money up the front, then we would have a large cash surplus to be able to do with what we need, which is obviously, as we all know, repair the roads, build a public safety building, fix our waters crisis issues. And I'd like to say I'm pretty happy that we finally identified a viable meter for secondary water. I think it's pretty strange that, of course, it's out of necessity, that we're currently charging by the square foot. I see our neighbors sometimes who literally water 24 hours a day on their assigned watering days. We can look out at like 1:00 AM, there it goes. 11:00 PM, still going. So clearly, some people are taking advantage of the system. And when we're able to actually meter that water, it'll be nice that we'll be able to collect the revenue from that. And that'll also, because the free market regulates scarcity of product, then when prices are increased because people are using water too much, that'll encourage conserva, conservation. So there's a lot of benefits that are coming to Pleasant Grove. And I just want to make sure that as a city council, we are prepared to follow the wave and the change in times that are coming. So, all right.
Did you, did you answer the questions that?
I did not answer the questions. I figured I would give my spiel and then give you people time to pose the questions since I wasn't sure if I would run out of time. Now, I know the one is coming about time commitment. I've calculated it's about 110 hours a year that will be spent inside of the city council chambers and meetings. I assume there's probably more deliberation outside of the city council chambers as well, as well as events such as the Strawberry Days Parade that all city council members are expected to attend. That's really not too much of a difficulty as a time commitment. I do a lot, and quite a lot, but this would definitely be a worthy time commitment on my part. As far as decision-making processes go, I know that, at least from my personal experience, a command and control style, we must force people to do something is not necessarily an appropriate response to a crisis. So for example, on the Murdock Canal Trail, we are talking about basically imposing an additional layer of regulation that people are already not following, if they're just speeding through the stop signs, what's to say that that's going to change? So one thing we could do, and especially if you had all this extra money flowing in, so answer to all these problems is more money, as we all know. We can just do what they started doing down further in Provo and dig under the street so that people don't actually cross the street, completely eliminate the intersection. That's, at least in my mind, a logical approach to the solution.
Most serious issue, Vexon?
I would say that, actually, I think I've answered that one, but I just think it's making sure that we stay with the times and that we don't get swept away in the future.
What's your background, you're a professional?
How far back do we want to go? So I have, I graduated with a master's in political science, moved to Washington DC and worked on research, statistics, and nonprofits there, providing data to individuals who ended up making several bills that became law, so I like that. And I moved out here because I was recruited by a tech company that shortly after I moved out here, they were bought and they laid everybody off. So I got picked up by Utah Valley University and now I manage all their admissions staff.
Any other questions?
Let me ask Cindy's question. You've got brilliant ideas, creative solutions. Are you willing to serve in various capacities in the city or?
The definition of various would depend on my answer, or would depend on my answer. But yes, I don't see any reason why my skills would be only limited to a city council type position.
Any others? Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Brave soul. Thank you. All right, Eric Jensen.
Eric Jensen, 120 North Main. Mayor and city council, it's a privilege and honor to be up here addressing you at this time. I am putting in for the vacant seat that I want to put a shout out to Jay and say thank you for the many, many hours that he's put into city council and outside the city council. And so about 24 years ago, my wife and I moved into this great city. We had an experience just before that where I was driving on First East and I got pulled over by a wonderful city officer. And I swore to myself I would never move into Pleasant Grove. And so not long after that, a few months later, we moved into Pleasant Grove because we found out that it is a great community to live in and to raise our family. Our daughter was one years old when we moved into, into 120 North Main. And here in about a few months, we're going to have our first grandson. So that's how much time has passed away for us. But we've loved our time here in Pleasant Grove. I've served as, with this great lady right here, as the neighborhood chair for Little Denmark many times. And I've loved getting to know my neighbors and getting involved with them and understanding the issues that they deem important to the city and that they face on the databases. Mayor Daniels remembers me. He appointed me to the very first downtown advisory board. And the time that I spent there was a tremendous opportunity for me to get to know our local businesses, our small businesses. We thrive on our small businesses. That's what, that's what makes our community chug a long. And I really appreciated that time, the time to promote them, to understand them and where they're coming from. And it's great to see that our downtown now is thriving, have those opportunities. And those business owners taking the opportunity to come to Pleasant Grove and to serve us. I've also had the opportunity and still do, I serve on the planning commission for the last two years. And currently as the chair. We have many issues that come before us and then come before you as a council. And the time that we spend with planning commission and to hear from the developers, the landowners, the property owners, and the zoning issues that they have, and the opportunities that they have to develop their land, has been a tremendous opportunity for us, I think, as a, as a planning commission and me, to serve with them. I'm grateful for the friendships that I've created there and the opportunities we have to grow our community, to work with the general plan, to work with staff is vital. And then mostly to listen to our citizens. It's been mentioned tonight that we need to bring unity into our community. Mayor Daniels, you remember probably very fondly Discovery Park, and the opportunity we had there to work with the citizens and pull the citizens together. And then just a few weeks ago, the opportunity we had to see, it was just amazing to see the Pleasant Grove biking community come together with the high school. What a great vision, what a great opportunity they had to come before us as you as the city council and as the citizens that were here, to resent their plan, very well put together and thought out, that they had their answers and they had their plan. And it's great to see our community come together and work together in those types of visions. This last year, I've had the opportunity to work on Strawberry Days Association. Great experience. Bruce Chestnut approached me and asked me to be over sponsorships. I didn't know what I was getting into. But it's been wonderful, again, to work with our businesses within this community and outside our community and to see the vision that they have for us and the opportunities they have to be part of our great Strawberry Days. I, you know, I grew up in a small town in Idaho. They had something similar, but it was nothing compared to what Strawberry Days is and has been and always will be to our community. It draws us together as friends, neighbors, and as a community.
How long it's running in the state, right?
Yeah, yes, 96 years, I think, is what we're on now. I think we're coming up on it close, yep. But I think the underlying statement here is I've had the opportunity to work with the citizens, my friends, my neighbors. Two years ago, I had the opportunity to run for city council with some great people. And they're sitting up in front of me right now. And I appreciate it, I really appreciated that opportunity. I think we get along very well. I think we see eye to eye on a lot of things and other times we have some different visions and that's okay. That we're able to get along and listen to those items. Ben, to your question, decisions, tiebreakers, we have it all the time on the planning commission. But we're able to listen and understand, and information is key to all of us in understanding where that, where certain individual or developer is coming from and how to understand that. And if we differ from someone, that's great, but we can shake their hands afterwards and move forward and be, and have that unity to pull our community together. You said working together as a council. I love all of you. I think I understand all of you, I work well with you, and so I appreciate that. Issues now. I think I've been coming to city council for eight, nine, 10 years or more. And, and we do, we face some similar issues. Roads is a big one right now. Public safety has always been a big one, has been since we moved here 24 years ago. It's always been an issue. Are we providing the correct services, the needed services and the facilities for our public safety? Diana, time commitment. I love this one. I'm willing to do anything and everything for this community. We're empty nesters, I don't have any kids at home. And it's wonderful. Sorry, Jeremy.
Your wife does.
But I do, I enjoy, I have the opportunity to, I worked for the city of Warham, have for the last 14, 15 years, but my schedule allows me, and I do have enough free time to take off and come and devote it to our city. When we were campaigning, I was able to take time off and knock doors, 1100, 1200 doors. And what a wonderful experience that was to actually see our citizens face-to-face and understand where they're coming from on different issues. A lot of times, it's, it's not the roads. It may be something just locally to their, to their community right there. Cindy, if not selected, am I willing to serve? Yes.
I don't think I need to ask.
Okay. But anyway, thank you for your time. I really, I appreciate all of you, I appreciate this community so much. I truly appreciate doing anything I can to help our community. Thank you. Any, sorry.
I should apologize, I did just verify, it is 94 years.
Oh, 94, so I was trying to put two.
I was mistaken with the high school celebration with those 100 years last year, so.
Maybe we can merge those two numbers and come together.
So, thank you, Eric.
Ben, you look like you're going to ask a question.
Oh, I've got questions for everybody, yeah. Oh, I've got questions for everybody, yeah. But you did a great job of answering the two that I've been asking. Let me ask you some special ones just for you. I've heard some people say that they don't plan to run for a seat this November. Do you declare your intention to run? Do you think that'll be a distraction? Do you think that'll be?
I don't. I, I think it's a positive. It's, it's an opportunity to come to the table and, and to come to the table running and pick up and understand the issues right now and to help the city council and in the future. I think it's only a positive that I'm able to provide to the city and to the city council and understand the citizens and the issues at hand, so.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
The new and improved Matt Gotti.
I'm not at that stage.
I'm talking about a few other.
Oh, okay. Matt Gotti, 1026 East, 1100 North. I did shave. We went to the Basin Temple and everything today and I thought it'd be appropriate, so.
Present something you might be drawn about right now.
All, all of Ben taking a mantle for a while. My background, sorry, I have a bachelor's in science in civil engineering and a master's in structural engineering and emphasis on structures and earthquake design. I have lived here, I don't know, five, five years or so and I come from Seattle originally, so I, I've been engrossed in that part of the world for a while. I am currently a project manager at Mountain State Steel and another title for project manager could be problem solver. I used to say fireman, but then I got a little whole lot more respect for the firemen and what they do, so I don't call myself a fireman anymore. I don't put out fires, they do. And then, within that job capacity, there's a lot of things that a project manager does. One of them, we work with a lot of government agencies, municipalities. There's a lot of legal documents that we have to go through. There's a lot of public relations is a huge part of the construction industry and that portion of it. And then, the problem solving is the biggest part. That's one of the reasons why I elected to, to apply is most of what I see from the city council is that there's problems that arrive. You have to come up to a resolution and you have to solve it. That's all I do. That's all I am. I'm a problem solver by nature. Some of my core values and beliefs, educational advancement. I do have a higher education and I believe that every, every person that wants to should have that opportunity as well. The fiscal responsibility is very key. I applaud Dean for the work that he's done in the city and there's a lot of things. I love seeing that the, the water is all sustainable for the future budget on that. Absolutely elates me that, that we've gotten to that point and we're talking about it on a continual basis and that's part of our, our goal. Environmental sustainability, like I said, I'm from Seattle. I'm kind of a tree hugger. So, that's just who I am and air quality here in Utah is less than what I'm used to. So, that's something that I would like to help out with. Obviously, that's not a city council thing, but in general. And then governmental strength, that's something I like to see at the state and local levels and that's something I do think that I could help out with, is trying to help the, the cities make decisions for our local area and then state and then better after that. But if the city have more power to be able to make their own decisions, we can address the issues that are relevant to us, the citizens of Pleasant Grove. There's a few questions that were asked. So, one of them is process for decision-making. And I've actually outlined that part probably in my application. Thank you. And I'll allow for, for everyone else for that. And the, the basis of that is information. You have to gather and you have to make decisions off the information that you're given. Staff, you guys presented the information, the best of your village to the city council and city council house to digest that information and make the best decision that they can. So, first, establish common ground. You need to make sure that everyone understands the situation, you establish that common ground and, and the things that you do agree upon. Next, you need to analyze the differences. What things don't you agree on? Not, not everyone is going to agree on absolutely every position. And then we need to discuss possible resolutions. So, I'm going to apply a quick scenario here and that's the speed bumps that the gentleman brought up. So, is there a need for some sort of a traffic control in his area with the speeding? Obviously, we, we would agree that there is. Do we agree that a speed bump is the correct solution? That might be one of the differences. So, discuss possible resolutions. We've discussed rumble strips or lighting enforcement, some of those things. Negotiate, and then fourth, we negotiate and compromise an acceptable resolution. So, let's say that we set enforcement's the way and the, Mike and the police department go out and enforce and, and take care of that. Problem goes away for three months. Okay, well, that doesn't really solve the base problems, which brings us to the fifth point, which is follow up and adjust as necessary. That's key in, in my experience, in my lifetime to always make sure you follow up and make adjustments because you're never going to get it right the first time. We just don't. There, there's always something that you can improve on. And that's one thing that I see, in my opinion, the council members are often criticized for, is not getting it right the first time. Well, I don't expect that the council members will ever get it right the first time. I expect that they'll adjust and follow up as necessary to make improvements and make everything better as we go along. You also asked about the greatest need and Eric stole my thunder on the unity and community part, you know? But that's all right. We had same, same thought process. And, and really, I think the, the unity of the community is, is the most important. Tied with that closely is the fiscal responsibility. I think one of the big divides in the city is because of the finances. And we just, we flat out don't have enough finances to meet the needs of everything that the citizens want and need and even the staff and council members. Obviously, if you have enough money to do everything, you would. So, that, that I think is the greatest need is pushing for and figuring out the best way to have the citizens join together within our current fiscal means to accomplish what is most relevant and needed for the city now. And then also with that, have an economic plan for the future on how to address and fix the things that are still outstanding. And then Diana, you asked about time commitment. Is that correct? You guys have seen me here. I've been to the city council meetings. I know there's a lot more involved and I'm willing to invest whatever time it takes to be able to do that. And, and then Cindy, you asked about service in the community. Here in Pleasant Grove, I think the, besides, you know, church callings and local things and Strawberry Days, cutting strawberries and now doing signs and the walks and things like that. I, I do as much as I can and I've been, been activated. But here in Utah County, I've been a lot more active in my, I guess, service. I've given several presentations and discussions at Utah Valley University. I've been involved in BYU. I've spoken to civil engineering students there. I've done testing and presentations up at Utah, University of Utah as well. So, from a educational and professional standpoint, I've been quite involved in the, the local community and providing my expertise and the knowledge that I've gained over the years. And the other thing I am involved in is the Citizens Academy and I'm going to try and convince the police chief to let me get tased tomorrow, so. Let me sign the waiver first. Sorry, one second, then we'll go for that, so. I have actually really enjoyed the Citizens Academy and that's something that I, I chose to do more so to get another viewpoint that I didn't have. I love to learn new things all the time, but I wanted to get that other viewpoint that I didn't, didn't have. And I've learned a lot already in the, the few weeks that we've been doing it from their standpoint on what the community needs and why they go about things. And I, I plan on continuing to do that in all aspects. Maybe Chief Thomas can have some sort of academies. We can go put out fires or something in the future. I'd love to do that. And anything that, that really we have the opportunity to be involved in community, that's something that I'm, I'm interested in.
Dean's Academy.
Yes. Dion's down the street. I can go pull weeds with him. Yeah, I could do that too. That would be good, so.
Any questions for Matt?
See, you haven't asked any questions to anybody though.
Well, I have your bios, Ben and Diana, and I mean.
All right. Just want to make sure you're covered.
Yeah, this is awesome. And so, I think you said the last great question, so.
So, a press presentation. Let me ask a follow-up. You talked about uniting the community. Do you have ideas of how to do that, proposals? I mean, I agree that that's a great need and uniting of our community.
One of the things that, that I have been pushing for and, and asking about is the public safety committee and that is moving forward and I appreciate the involvement of the, the council and the mayor in getting that forward. You asked several people if they're going to be involved in other things. I obviously would want to be involved in that provided I don't get the council seat. If, if I do get chosen to have the council seat, I think I would be present in those meetings and let someone else fill that, so I could still present that information. Someone's whistling at me and I. Sorry, was, I got distracted. Was your original question? Proposed unity. So, the public safety building is one of them. Again, I, I really enjoy how some council members, members are communicative to the public and I think that's important. But really making sure that the, there is transparency, bringing the involvement in. And more importantly, I think the best way to get that unity is to get that community involvement, have them on the board, to have them at, at activities, have them at meetings and, and getting that information. The reason I got involved in the first place is because there was a problem and I started getting information. That information started flowing to me and I got really involved in it. So, if that information starts to flow out, more and more people have that information. I think inherently they will get involved.
Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it, Matt. Okay, Ryan Ollred.
Ryan Ollred, 1093 East, 30 South. I've lived here quite a while. I graduated from Pleasant Grove High, but I originally grew up in Oregon and so I've got a little bit of tree hugging me as well. But, you know, it's, it's been great to live in Pleasant Grove. I think one of Pleasant Grove's greatest assets is the family feel, you know? And, and one of the number one priorities is always safety in a family. And I think Pleasant Grove is in the middle of a big, how to get through this safety issue with maintaining that family feel. And I think that's kind of the number one priority because I think we all want the safety. There's obviously a need there. It's how we do it and maintain that family feel. And I hope we can do that, whoever, you know, however that ends up turning out. But I'm also humbled to be part of this amazing, huge group that wants to serve with, with, in this capacity. So, there's a lot of, of great candidates that I've listened to that I thought, man, I would love to connect with them, you know, and, and be a part of them, even if I'm, I'm not appointed. There's a lot of great citizens in the city, so I'm grateful for that. As far as my decision-making process, I love to take all the input from any direction, from every direction and just, you've got to decide what you, what you believe is the best route for the city because that's what the city council does, is you, you end up having to go back to what's the best solution for the problem you're facing for, for the city, for the whole entire city and not just maybe the one or two loud voices that are out there. Because oftentimes it's the loud voices that end up controlling things and not necessarily the correct, the correct decision. But that's, that's what I do and, and the time commitment, I'm willing to, to give the time to do that, to serve and to be more interactive in, in the city's processes and, and decision-making and be able to do that. So, and I, my background is I, right now I'm, I've had my real estate license since 2003. I own my own real estate company. And so, having to run your own business is, is quite similar to being part of a city council, I think, and being a, a business owner. I think my strengths can help in that way. And I have four great kids, loving family and our whole, both sides live in Pleasant Grove of our family and have been here a long time and, and we just love it, so.
And would you be willing to serve either committees or commissions?
I would, yeah. I think helping out in any way I can would be great, so.
Did you mention other areas that you volunteered with or helped in the city and served already?
I haven't served in the city. I've tried to be input on people when I connect to them and just kind of communicate with, I've communicated with several city council members through ideas and things, but I have not served in the, in the city in any capacity right now, so.
Can you speak to my question right about what you perceive was our greatest need? That you may have mentioned it.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of getting through the safety issue with keeping the family feel because I think that's a, a really big priority is, is not only getting through that safety issue, which is a, a great need, but maintaining the family feel, which kind of goes along with the unity people have been talking about, so.
Questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Well, got a tough choice here. There's multiple very qualified people and very willing. So, the procedure at this point, as I understand it, unless we need to have an executive session for discussing competence or character or mental health, anyone's need. Okay, then if there's any deliberation to take place, you can do that now.
Which is hard.
It is difficult, yeah. It's tough. The council has mentioned before to me that it's really difficult to have a discussion about the qualifications of people when they're sitting in the room. And other people are sitting in the room too. You would, you would think that in any other situation, you would at least have the, the ability to have either that one-on-one privately or that you would at least be able to discuss those privately. But the law doesn't allow for that. So, there's no intent here to malign anyone's character or whatnot, but if we need to have a discussion, we're going to do the best we can to have it in public.
Oh, Mayor, and just so the public knows that we receive their bios.
Yes.
Which are in our pockets. We're able to review those as well, besides the interview time, so.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to have more discussion if it's a motion to put your point, but. Was that the intent of your motion?
Well, I thought if, I thought the process could be that we make the motion of someone and then have that discussion if needs be. But I also wanted to preempt and say something about the, my motion also.
Okay, okay. So.
But if you want to have, go ahead, Mayor.
From a, from a process perspective, the, the question on the table was, is there any discussion? And so, I just want to find out if there's any discussion.
And I would like to have more discussion prior to the making the motions, if that's okay. And I'd like to, like to analyze from a few different points. One of the things I'd like to say is I, we are all, I've been incredibly impressed with the qualifications and experience and the good people that are running. In one month, we will be taking declarations of candidacy for those that are wanting to serve a four-year term. And so, given that we can only select one, I would hope that, I would hope that every single one of you would at least strongly consider that opportunity to run and be involved in, in a longer-term commitment. I was reading earlier today some of the economic analysis of Dr. Kenneth Arrow and has his views on voting and social choice. And one of the arguments that I will make to the rest of the council is that rather than picking a single person, I think it would prove us to narrow this field down and maybe outline together who we think are our top three choices at this stage and get some narrowing and selection discussion on a, on a deeper level of some leading candidates that we would see as good qualifications for this.
Let's, let's review briefly the, the actual election process on that.
The election code does not make provision for that necessarily. It sort of leaves it open as to the method that you can do. The two ways that were suggested were, big church, and this is just off the top of its head, says, put them in an order that the order that we have, a random order, and just start down the list and the first person that gets three votes is your guy. Or, there's nothing in the statute that says you can't do what Councilmember Boyd is doing and make a motion to appoint somebody and if that person gets the three votes that require them, Jordan, then they're it. So, it's not spelled out in detail. There's certainly no prohibition on doing what Councilmember Stanley is proposing, but it, it also isn't something that's mandated to do that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, perfect, perfect sense. And given that there's an availability to do that, I think that the good economic analysis that I have studied suggests that that does tend to lead to a better ultimate conclusion. Rather than a single vote, preferential voting would be ideal, in my view, but I think that would take too much time to rank the nine candidates in a order of preference. But I would love to have us have a discussion and hear from each member of this body who the top three are that you're most inclined to support at this stage.
I, I feel very uncomfortable going in that direction. I feel like the legal counsel is such that it's pretty much spelled out kind of what direction we have. I think in our minds, we all have the top three and we know. I think, you know, what I was going to say preemptive of making motions was that I've often told my kids in life that the hardest decision in life is not between a wrong and a right decision, but between two right decisions. And we have several right decisions here tonight. And I think it's. And I think it's our place and our, through the reading of the resumes and our association with everybody and our, the ability for them to stand up and present to them tonight. I feel like we can each individually come up with those top three. But to show that, I don't know what, if that behooves anybody to, to know that. And I would like to just move forward with the motion. And it's difficult. It's difficult for all of us because these are our peers, these are our neighbors, these are our friends. And normally when we vote, we go behind in a booth and we vote. And whether we want to or not, we share that vote with people. And if we don't want to, we don't. This is a whole different scenario. My stomach is flip-flopping as I speak. It is, there's a responsibility of us as council to, to go forward and make this decision. And if you're okay, I'd like to make the decision, make a motion.
Let me ask one question.
Okay.
Did we resolve the mayor's voting on these things in case of a tie?
So yes, if there is a two-two vote, we will bring the tie.
Okay, so only in the case of a tie? Thank you. Okay, so we've had, we have two opinions on how to proceed. I think you should ask the other two councillors what your thoughts are. Sid? Okay, Diana. We'll come back to you, Sid.
I, I agree with a lot of the persons that I think we do have in our minds are top three. I, I also have to say that as I was reading the bios last night, I was thinking myself coming from a business perspective, that I would love to screw together and start a business. So I got a banker, I got an engineer, I got a staff. This is high quality. This is very high-quality stuff. I've been impressed with everything that I read. So I think I'm okay to kind of start.
Just move to, move to the process of nominating. How about you, Sid?
Yeah, I agree, Matt. I can understand where, but it's coming from the line to have that discussion. But I do think that the bios that we've been given, the interviews that we've been held, that, you know, I think it's uncomfortable for, unless there's really glaring things that we need to discuss. I think it makes it uncomfortable for us, the council, and also for the candidates and the audience to, to do that. So unless there's glaring things, like I said, that we need to discuss, I would be comfortable with somebody making a motion and if we need to at that point discuss. But I'd be comfortable moving forward with the motion if, if we could.
I think we can do that. I think three of you would prefer that method. One comment, I would add to all that's been said. I hope that whatever decision the council makes would be as closely parallel to the decision that the voting public would have made. So that we kind of think about what would the public have done in this situation? What is the best reflective decision of the majority of people? And with that, I'll open it up for nominations.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I would like to nominate Eric Jensen as our next interim city council member.
Okay, we have a, we have a nomination for Eric by Sid? I'm sorry. Let me correct my writing here, Cindy. We need a second.
Okay, I'll second.
We have a second by Diana. And we'll take the voice vote.
We have a discussion part of the voice vote.
Can have a discussion.
Can I, can I say why?
I'd like to do that, yeah.
Yes.
He was a hundred points behind you in the election. I have knocked four hundred votes with him.
We can.
Talking of my... Yeah, do that. Do you want me to rephrase that or rephrase that?
Repeat.
In the general election last November, he was a hundred points behind Ben. And so I think that is indicative of how the public would vote. I have knocked doors. I have served with him on the strawberry days committee. There is no doubt in my mind that he would hit the, hit it running. His time commitment has been proven. And that's my thought process there.
Anyone else want to discuss?
I think that the question that when Ben asked, you know, would it be a conflict since he's running for city council? Not to me, that someone would be going to put themselves out and be subject to scrutiny and criticism while running and knowing that that could be, you know, that he's going to under scrutiny for the next six months before the election shows me his dedication and commitment to the process, that he might be willing to risk winning a city council seat in order to serve right now and put himself out there. So I, I appreciate that. And along with qualifications, again, many qualified candidates. But I think the question that Ben asked would really spoke to me and was that will commit him to be willing to put himself out there and serve right now.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments. I love Eric. Great man, good to his core, I believe. Certainly did very well in the last election. It makes us to see how the upcoming election goes. I'm not convinced that the voting public had the same option before them two years ago. We have a candidate in Frank Mills who's won a council seat twice in over eight years. I think in terms of absolute qualifications, there are some distinct differences. And so I would like to see some additional discussion. I think we owe it to the public to fully vet all of these great candidates, to fully discuss and truly deliberate over possibilities. I fear that the public occasionally gets the perception that this city has pre-scripted solutions or has an answer made up in advance. And I would like to make sure that in this particular discussion, we have a great thorough vetting and a good analysis based on qualifications and experience. And my competing motion, nomination for Frank Mills, for Von Mayo, for Matt Godsey. Here's an engineer who would most closely fill the vacancy of the missing Jay Meekum, who we also adore and are sad to have go. But in terms of educational background, we've got a lot of great candidates. I would like to hear each of my colleagues' top three choices. They may have it in their minds, but the public doesn't know what that is. And I think we have a moral obligation to really deliberate and to really discuss. So that's my counter-motion. Three nominations.
Okay, let me go for procedure. Let me, let me go to procedure. We have a motion, we have a second. We can take a vote or the motion can be withdrawn and we could have a substitute motion. Or we can withdraw and we can have a discussion. But at this point, there's a motion on the table with a second.
So is it my responsibility to withdraw it or not?
It would be yours.
So I choose not to withdraw and would like to ask for a vote.
Diana? You're the second.
I'm okay to vet.
Okay, so then you withdraw your second?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Do we have a different second on the motion? Okay.
I mean, in a spirit of transparency, if Ben wants to discuss the candidates, then try to be willing to do that.
Okay. Then motion will die from lack of a second. Not a judgment on you at all, okay? Just the process of vetting candidates. All right, so how would you like to proceed, council? Precariously and unblas?
I propose...
That's not how we, that's not how we operate.
That's what we always operate. I move that this body consider, and I know that it's uncomfortable and it's probably more uncomfortable for the people in my audience that listen to us having this discussion. But I propose that we each talk, name the top three and let me narrow this field.
Okay, I actually have a top four, I'll get party started.
So, so wait, you're making a motion?
I'm moving that we can adopt this procedure. I don't, we can just have the discussion if you like.
Getting way, way offline here. So if, if Councilmember Stanley is asking to have the discussion, it's not necessarily by a motion. You can just say, let's name our top four, top three, and they can do it.
Okay. All right.
Do all the notions that we...
Top three or four, just let's have the discussion.
Ben, let's start with you.
Yeah, I would...
I'm sorry.
I would put Frank Mills. And let me give some justification. Here's a man who has tremendous qualifications, knows the city inside and out. Went to BYU. Von Mayo for the same reason, but also a business background, an understanding of the issues that our city faces. And I would put Matt Godsey as my third choice, as someone who articulated without even asking the principles and processes that he would follow in a decision-making. As somebody who, I think that the needs that our city is going to face in the next three, well, let's say the next eight months, the remainder of this term vacancy, the great needs that we are going to face are assessing some structural engineering issues in buildings that are, that we're looking at, or buildings, construction of roads, construction of public safety buildings, things where we do have a void, a vacuum created in Jay's departure for engineering expertise. So I would, I would list those three as the ones that I would like to see in a subsequent vote. With the absolute understanding that there are tremendous other candidates that I have great respect for and appreciation for and would like to see stay involved at a lot of different levels.
Delicately put. Okay, so Ben, you're putting Frank, Von, and Matt on the list?
Yes.
Sid?
Sure, I'll go. I actually have four. Dustin, Scott Richards, Eric, and Matt. You know, when I ran for city council, I'm not an entrepreneur, I'm not an engineer, I'm not... Kind of on my own business, I, I guess it's entrepreneur, I haven't, I didn't do a lot of those things. But that's not why I ran. I ran because I was passionate for making a difference in the community. So to me, I'm not looking for someone that has a specific skill set necessarily. I just want to see a commitment, passion for making a difference, willingness to come out, put themselves in front of the public and get the job done. Because that's where I was at three and a half years ago. And so I don't think it's filling the void of a skill set that left or something that's absent because we do have a city engineer and we do have people, professionals in our city that we can ask these specific questions to if it's regarding a specific skill set. So that's what I found in these four people. And obviously, the others don't have that, but that's what stood out to me. As well, whether someone has been here for one year or thirty years. Again, I'm basing it off of their bios, what I know from them, working with them as a councilman right now as a resident, and their current involvement. And my top four, that's where I'm at with.
Okay, Sid, you listed Dustin Phillips, Scott Richards, Eric Jensen, Matt Godsey.
That's right.
All right, Diana?
I also, Dustin Phillips. I love the service of the library board. A comment about Frank. There is no doubt in my mind that he knows all the history. I also believe that he's available for consulting.
So are you putting him on the list?
No.
Okay.
Dustin Phillips, Eric Jensen, and Matt Godsey. And for Matt, so I, I think I invited the reasons why Eric. For Matt, I have enjoyed his comments in council, creative solutions.
All right, I showed Dustin, Phillips, Eric Jensen, and Matt Godsey. All right, Cindy?
I would like to just say amen to everyone's comments about the selections. And I, my list resembles quite the same as some of the others and for a lot of the same reasons. And going back to my comment earlier, it's not the decision between a wrong and a right. It's really the decision about several rights. And I also believe and that there's a time and a season for things in life. And I believe there's a time and a season for that person to be on the council at this time. I also want to make a comment to Ben's comment about it being predetermined. Do not assume that. It's unfair to the rest of us, but you assume that we have predetermined anything before tonight. And I would like to just say, there has not been any predetermined decisions prior to this new year. And so I would like to also reiterate Eric, Scott Richards, and Dustin.
Okay, so you put Eric, Jensen, Scott Richards. I'm sorry, what did you say, your third choice? Dustin. Okay. So we have, we have several duplicates here that you've all spoken to. Did you have a comment?
I just wanted to state for the record that I did not say that any decision was pre-scripted or predetermined. I said that perception can...
All right. I don't know that we're limited necessarily to the list that was presented here. But you folks have each stated your preferences. My assumption would be that whoever makes a motion is probably going to pick from this list of people that they have reviewed and heard and deliberated over themselves. Is there any further discussion? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to restate my motion. And in fairness to Eric, I think we need to give him a vote.
Okay.
A full vote if we can, so I nominate Eric Jensen.
Okay, we have, we have a nomination. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, by voice, Cindy?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Diana? Okay, congratulations, Eric. We would invite you to come up and take the oath of office. And who is it, newest drink?
Kathy.
Thank you. While they're coming up, I want to say, I've looked at this list, I've looked at the qualifications. Any of you could have served in this capacity, really, any of you could have. And I appreciate that, thank you.
And I think we all would like to applaud that statement. I mean, if, these kind of decisions are the very most difficult decisions that we make. And those that have not been serving, you can start. And those that are serving in our community, just continue. And thank you so much.
All right, Eric, if you want to come up, then.
Eric, do you want to bring your microphone?
Yes.
She has a pin to put on her lapel.
Actually, she will take the oath of office.
You're in the background.
You're in the background. You are, whatever those things are called.
Photo box.
Photo box.
You ready? Put your right hand. I stand.
I, Eric Jensen.
Islamally swear.
Islamally swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Congratulations, sir. Do you want to come up and take your place here? Okay, so you will be voting on anything in the future that we talk about?
As I can, sure.
At this point, it's been requested that we have a little bio break. So let's take a five-minute break and then we'll come back. At this point, it's been requested that we have a little bio break, so let's take a five-minute break and then we'll come back.
A little bit of vacation.
No good. How you doing?
And so I thought as a. Yes, well, it was very.
I banged the gavel three minutes ago.
We're just here forever, aren't we?
All right, we want to thank everyone and welcome you back to council meeting. I think we've taken care of everything up until section ten. Section ten, our action items with public discussion. Item A is a continued public hearing to consider for adoption, a resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero one one. Authorizing the mayor to sign a utility easement agreement between Pleasant Grove City and Pacific Court and Oregon Court. Doing business as Rocky Mountain Power to construct, reconstruct. Operate, operation, maintenance, repair, replacement, enlargement, and removal. Of electric power distribution and communication lines, and all necessary or desirable accessories and appurtenances. Property located on the south side of five hundred south, at approximately three fifty west, and providing for an effective date. Bacon?
We need to obviously work on making those even longer.
Well, you know, the last one was longer than that, so I won't pay with this one.
So on, associated with our project, add the additional diamonds and other improvements at the rodeo grounds, Shannon Fields. The existing power line which ran along the south side of the property there is now in the northern half of the street, in the pavement. So Rocky Mountain Power has by their franchise agreement with us the obligation to move out of our way at their cost. They've identified and indicated a desire to go along the south side of the road. In the area that would normally be a public utility unit, so completely out of the public right-of-way. The roadway right-of-way that we have, when Pete Hunsaker took over the precast concrete property that had moved his business in. He deeded a portion of the right-of-way needed to build that street to the city. Including a little bit wider section along the south side that runs along, not his property, but Lloyd Ash's business there. That wasn't going to benefit him at all, and so the easement that we're talking about grounding is along that south. Boundary of the right-of-way, the first ten feet south of the right-of-way. On property that I anticipate coming to the council at a future date. And doing a deed or a bounded on agreement with Lloyd Ash to move that to him, so. This establishes an easement for Rocky Mountain Power to install the poles and get out of the road. There isn't any cost to us or any negative impact to the city.
Are there any impacts to the businesses or people who want that area?
There, there will be an impact to Pete Hunsaker during the time that they switch everything over, but when we're done, everything will be back to the way it was.
Okay, so it's just a temporary inconvenience?
Temporary inconvenience, so they do the work, but this is a new permanent location for the overhead power.
Was there any discussion about going underground, or is that not even possible?
It's possible, it, that's a betterment, that's above and beyond what Rocky Mountain Power does as a minimum, that would have cost the city significantly more to do that.
Okay, just for purposes of public knowledge, what kind of costs do they?
I didn't, I would assume in the tens of thousands, I did not get an actual quote. We looked at doing underground power on Thirteenth West before we started the signal project. Rocky Mountain Power's portion of that, if I remember right, was eighty-six thousand. And that was just to eliminate, that was to go between the two poles that border Pleasant Grove Boulevard. And go underground for that short section, our contractor's estimate to put in the vaults and the conduit. Was another twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars, so it's very expensive to go underground.
Yeah, it is, especially if they're retroing, that is really the question, is when you have the opportunity to do a retro. That's when I ask the questions of an appropriate time to go ahead and make that an underground utility rather than a body head.
And we did discuss it during the process of considering the project, and just it didn't appear to be in the budget to make that improvement.
Did you have a comment? Any questions, discussion? Okay, this is a continued public hearing, so we'll open it up to the public if you have comments or thoughts, or just want to talk about it. Please come up and state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
May I make a proposal that we let council member Jensen make this motion if he desires to? Want me to go ahead and make the motion?
It's up to you. Don't feel pressured.
Continue the public hearing.
Yes, it says continue public hearing, and then if you want to do, just remove this black section.
We have one here, they just don't have one themselves.
Make a motion that we adopt resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero eleven, authorizing the mayor to sign a utility easement. Agreement between Pleasant Grove City and Pacific Court and Oregon Court. Doing business as Rocky Mountain Power to construct, reconstruct, operation, maintenance, repair, replacement, enlargement. And removal of electric power distribution and communication lines, and all necessary desirable accessories, and. What, I don't know, that, what is this?
Appurtenances.
Is that good? And property located on the south side of five hundred south, at approximately three fifty west, and providing for an effective date.
I'll second, may I? Okay, can I have that paper back here?
Thanks. Thank you, Ben.
So we have a motion by Eric, we have a second by Ben, and by voice, Ben?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Motion varies, it's unanimous, you did your first one, congratulations.
It's easier than that.
May the Senate stop that controversy.
There goes Scott. That's the most political thing I've ever heard you say.
All right. That concludes the regular business items, we have no items for discussion only. Let's look at the May twelfth agenda. Consent items. It's likely with the vacating of the chairman's position for planning commission, that we will have a name to you by May twelve. We have a couple of interviews this scheduled this week, and so we'll have some names for them to. Look at for filling an alternate position on the planning commission. Then the planning commission can go ahead and take their action for midterm replacement of their chair. All right. And that will come under number seven. Presentations, we have a presentation from structural engineers regarding the findings from the RFP for the fire station back home, Old Rec Center, and old seminary building. So there's four of them?
There's four of them, we have them starting at six thirty, we're running in thirty-minute increments. Was it fifteen minutes of presentation?
I asked them to give a ten to fifteen minute presentation and then bring under the time.
So it looks like we've reserved quite a bit of time to make sure we have.
We'll spend at least two hours.
Sounds good.
Now, Will, their proposals will put in your packet, so you're going to read through those, but you can come in and do a presentation. I'm sure be a follow-up on their initial proposals.
Okay. Anything else we need to be aware of?
Yeah, so the intent is not to necessarily make a decision that night, it's to hear the presentation, I think maybe next week we can award. Who's going to get that, we'll go over the, you know, what their financial bid is, and those things, next week, so.
So what will their presentations entail?
They're just going to come in and tell us about themselves.
Their company and.
Yep, they're going to tell us what projects they've worked on in the past, you know, who's the lead person that's going to be doing it, what their experience is, and. My, this is my assumption, they'll just follow what has been in their proposals. We'll work out a score sheet for you guys to use, that you can score each of them individually, and then. And then you can have discussion at night, you can have discussion the next week, and between the score sheet that you have tallies and discussion. You know, you can decide who you want to afford. Or to enter into an agreement to award that.
And these have been vetted from the perspective of qualified and.
Yeah, so we have a committee that had. Bacon, Dave Houston, our building official, Curtis Minor, Jay Meekum, and myself. We reviewed them, we scored them, we had seven proposals, we scored them, and these were the top four. So we, yeah, as far as qualifications and all those things, we vetted that. They'll come in and re-present that, I'm assuming.
And that will also be on the score sheet that you give us?
Well, it's going to be in the proposal, the score sheets are going to be yours to determine what you hear their presentation on, what you would rate their abilities.
Thank you. All right, under action items, did anybody have questions on that one? Okay, action items ready for vote, number nine A is to consider for adoption a resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero one four. Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between Pleasant Grove City and Gerber Construction. For the construction of a new power generating turbine building for the Blue Energy Project and providing for an effective date.
Yeah, so last week we just, we awarded the bid, but we didn't have an agreement yet.
Okay.
And we just made that, that just finalizes the contract.
Okay. And that's not to include the equipment inside, this is just the building at this point?
Well, it's, so the turbine is a separate contract, but everything else is with this contract.
It also includes a restroom facility, I just, I looked it over briefly, I didn't see the. The war, the bid, it talked about.
We were going to do a restroom facility, but it's not. We'll make sure that.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item?
Location exactly?
Our big main drinking water tank, the panel one, that was the old, concrete.
The covered tank. The covered tank.
The covered tank, yeah, on the north side of the road. Just uphill of that is a smaller one.
The chlorine?
Well, yeah, the chlorine building is next to that too, so just uphill of that.
Okay. Below Battle Creek Park? Ken?
Is that Battle Creek Park? No, that's a.
Got my, my Battle Creek all mixed up there.
Okay, you have the right spirit about you. Any other discussion on that one? Okay, item ten is a public hearing to consider for adoption and ordinance two thousand fifteen dash eighteen permanently closing and abandoning a road right-of-way located approximately five fifty west, thirty-three hundred north and North Mill Creek Road, thirty-three hundred north in the Creekside at Aspen Grove subdivision and providing for an effective date. This is David.
So, I don't have a picture to show.
We all know it well.
Well.
No, I don't.
I don't think everybody knows it well. So if you go out to the Manila Pond on thirty-three hundred north, our secondary pond, if you drive to the east end of the road, you end up at the gate to Creekside at Aspen Grove Development. A portion of that area, so about a quarter of the bridge sits on public right-of-way. As you enter their property, the interior HOA property and turn to the left and go up to David Flinders' home, he's on a public street, so it's a little discontinuous piece of a public road. This was from development that occurred twelve years ago?
Yeah, I think I can shed a little light on that. When David Flinders came in and asked to have a permit for his home, it was unclear how the roadway was going to work and exactly how it was going to work with Creekside because they had not been developed yet. So we required him to dedicate the public road in front of his lot in case we needed it. So now that everything's been developed, we don't need it, so.
Is his lot the one by the school? You, are we talking the road that?
He's living in Barnes. Have you been out there lately?
So right at the covered bridge, go through the bridge, and we're talking about the road that goes off to the left?
At one stage, they determined that we thought that the road should be, should go up through there at one stage and then when the school came in, the road was moved to the left.
So that's drawing really quick and lousy and you can see why he's computer, he'll be trolling. So here's the bridge. The roadway that we're talking about abandoning is this up through here. A portion of this, there's a portion of the HOA right-of-way that comes out into here. So there are two plats that are coming forward that vacate out what David had before, vacates out some of the original lots in Creekside. They are incorporating a strip of ground that the city sold to them about two, three years ago now. They also bought a strip of land from Robert Scow. Each of the individual lot owners have their own little strip, so we're kind of cleaning up. So this housekeeping issue with increasing those lot sizes, we're getting rid of this. The HOA is going to finish the road improvements in front of the gate, put in a nice T pad, have sidewalk. It'll just look a lot better. David's going to extend the roadway up into his property Farina to create a new building lot here. And in the revised plat, his home, which has no ability to be accessed without coming through Creekside's gate, will be formally added into their association, so it will become a lot which is Creekside.
Don't we normally get a thing before we have this discussion? A packet with the drawing at least?
I, yeah, Kathy has a drawing. It's been posted with the announcement, something hilarious.
What I meant was like, normally we have something to look at when we have this discussion.
I had that and then, well, the Apple TV, I can communicate that with my iPad.
Okay, thanks.
I think it'll be in our packet.
Yeah, we're having the discussion now and trying to make sure I remember where those roads are. Any questions? All right. The next item then is going to be eleven A, discussion with, how do you pronounce that? Eric?
Eric.
Eric? Okay, Eric Jensen of Molton General regarding a proposed development on Main Street including shared parking access easements, historic buildings, and related issues.
Okay, Eric Jensen, some of you have met when, you know, three years ago we did a tour up to Bountiful to their downtown and I did that with Steve Alredt and getting concepts for new development in a downtown area that can look like a pit now. And so he was at the time employed by the city of Bountiful, he is now employed by Molton General, a developer. So they were looking at some of the properties on our main street and would like to do something similar to what they had done up in Bountiful. However, it encompasses properties that include historic structures. Actually, anything that's fairly old within the downtown areas comprising the historic district Pleasant Grove. So, so there would be some issues involved with either utilizing or taking down some of those or a couple of buildings. And so they want to talk to the council about that as well as issues such as shared parking with the city parking lot access to their parking area. And currently we have some issues with, if they were to keep the historic structures, we have issues with required setbacks if they exceed a two-story height. They're proposing either a three or four-story height. So, so there are several issues that they want to discuss with the city council, kind of get your, your concept whether you're okay with certain things and how we must proceed.
Is this on the east side or the west side?
It's on the east side. And so between the old city hall building, the signs, whatever it is now, and the. So you've got two older structures, one is in the old home, and then you've got the antiques.
All right, so would it like fill that area in?
That, conceptually, that's what they propose.
Okay, great. Any questions on that one? Discussion? Well, you can get up on the table for a lifetime.
Why we weren't signed?
All right, then we'll do the nineteenth. We have regular staff business, so that concludes the agenda. Okay, neighborhood and staff business. Libby, do you have anything?
Happy to have monkey town filled.
That's great. Congratulations, and thank Lynn. Okay.
How long is that, Stephen Bacon?
Months?
Months, probably.
We have a lot of people tonight that would like to serve, so.
Through the wrong area.
Okay.
Lisa came and talked to us about the Heritage Festival, which is on September.
Yeah.
So get that on our calendars.
It'll be here before you know it, but I have to wait until after Strawberry Days to talk about it.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, anything else, Libby? Ken, anything else?
I meant to bring with me a paper that gave me exact figures, but I'll just give you conceptually what the, what the idea is. Actually, David provided me with the information. Basically, basically what it is, is it's just comparing the growth and development of Pleasant Grove to northern Utah County and Utah County as a whole and the state as a whole. And Pleasant Grove, in our, and this is looking specifically at single-family homes, has had a very strong increase over the last couple of years in the building or the issuance of building permits for single-family homes. So I know a lot of our emphasis recently has been on commercial and we've had a lot of review and approval of some multi-tenant as well. But that's not to ignore that we've had a very strong building permit issuance for single-family homes. So it was twenty-one percent increase, if I remember correctly, over last year. And it was a hundred and forty-six percent increase last year over the prior year. So even though we made that tremendous jump in two thousand thirteen, we still jumped from there. Last year, I had to compare that to the state, the county, and they both had decreases. So I think, you know, we, we need to recognize that we are having strong growth in a lot of areas, including single-family homes.
Good. Anything else, Ken? Ken, Dave? Nothing?
Yep.
John?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to all those that came to Lynn's retirement event. So I don't know how Kathy felt, but you know, as we prepared this, wondering if there's going to be enough food and then at ten minutes after three, wondering if they may spend a show. It was very nice that everybody attended. He deserved that. He deserved that recognition from our city, staff, elected officials, residents. I appreciate it.
Okay, anything else?
I like the decorations, the decor sign and the, what Warren Anderson made, that was, I liked that, that was nice.
There was, it was a very nice, very family-filled to the whole thing. It was very, very comfortable.
It makes me think of what my decorations would be.
It gives it that. What is it?
City cleanup.
Hazardous waste is not welcome, TVs, fires.
Where do we take our TVs in?
At all my hazardous places.
He is officially embedded in the TV. I actually don't know where you take those.
There's appliance places.
Oh, is there?
Put on land, it's a plant design, the place you can buy. There, there was a hazardous waste collection thing with the county.
I actually look at.
Yeah.
Is that, is that considered hazardous?
DI.
DI, that's where I do.
They take, I think, they prefer they work.
So Saturday to Saturday?
To Saturday.
So it concludes on the fireman's breakfast day?
Yeah.
Sixteen.
So in the past, the city council and staff has gotten together after a meeting to clean up Main Street in preparation for Strawberry Days. Is that something that we're interested in doing again?
It's like our fourth annual.
Well, I don't think we did it last year though. Yeah, so is that something we're interested in?
What's involved?
Either as a council or we can designate another day. We take a couple hours and as a council and staff and everyone's joined, we go down to Main Street and we sweep and we do weeds.
So we appoint people to go and do this for us? Oh, okay, sorry.
No, we did start it about four years ago.
So I guess to that point, a couple times we did it on a Tuesday night in conjunction. Either we did a little bit of a meeting and then we went out and did that. Or one of the times, I think we just moved to a Monday night.
And we came with our families?
Yep, and we dated.
The problem is getting it eleven-thirty, it's dark, so we just even go.
Well, if we hurry. I like it. I'd like to have you participate.
The Monday works out better because we put our families and the kids on there.
We'll arrange that and get that all set up and get everybody know.
What time does it start?
Usually do, we'll probably do like at six o'clock.
Great, I'll be there by nine.
And I think we bring pizza or something.
Pizza. I went as a non-elected official, the public has walked into it.
And we had some of them to do that, so.
So Dion did? Dion did test out, do flowers this year?
Oh, that is awesome.
They had so many people that they. They were planted. Well, majority of the city was planted by eleven o'clock and the second group only come up for maybe forty-five minutes. Same group was kind of upset.
That's, that is just amazing.
We got some good photos, but they.
That is really.
So with the photos, have we got them on the website or in the news?
Yeah, it's like, yeah, from Wolf Creek somewhere.
That's only a good, a good feeling thing for the whole community to know. I, and I, I want the whole community to know that they don't know.
Well, they're a guy, you know, they, we think the flowers are such a big deal to plan. They've been here the last two years with test hour. And they have no idea what it takes to plant a city, five or six guys, three days compared to three hours. It was awesome. They, we, yeah, we'll do some, I think Kenny can take them down off the stuff. They did a great job.
Okay, John, did you have anything else?
Done.
Dave?
Just informational. The guys have been doing some training in some of these houses that are kind of slated to be raised in the next little while. And so if you're driving by, you see a lot of fire apparatus and guys running around, we're probably not fighting a fire. Where there's no smoke, there's no fire. Yeah, we're just, we're just tearing those houses apart, you know, some, some training and stuff.
Okay, can we get on all that, Chief? Sid was suggesting a, or somebody suggested a fire academy?
I did.
It wasn't me there.
You want to come by, we'll throw you some turnout.
As long as I get back.
I guarantee you, you'll.
Yeah, you announced, I think you announced earlier last year or this year that you were looking at starting up a similar, like a BIP program in the fire department?
Yeah, we have our first meeting on Thursday night with, with the advocates that we've got so far. And we're going to kind of introduce them to the program and stuff. I think that, think with the people in the party, we're going to have a good, a good group to start with.
Anything else, Dave? And fireman's breakfast next Saturday.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
So next?
Following that.
Stick to sixteen and you'll be fine. Sixteen.
Mike?
Somebody's been busy.
Academy is going really good.
Mike, you guys have been busy.
We've been way busy.
And.
With major stuff.
What do you want to share?
You guys will see the breadth of that when you look at our overtime budget.
What, what can you share at this point? Is there anything?
Hey, did you catch the robber?
You have three.
Did you catch the UCC robber? Or can you not share that?
Yeah, I can share a little bit of that because it's still very active and so.
It's my credian and I was there, it was two hours before.
We do have one in custody. We're just trying to track down leads on a second robber and luckily, you know, nobody was hurting that.
Yeah, that is fortunate. It looked like the person was wearing extra hair and, yeah.
It was so bad, it was good.
So, you know, you guys have done great work. We've already served several warrants. We've covered a lot of things that are placed to the people that suspect we have, have, have information. So it's just, I can't say enough about our team that together and then, you know, we, of course, we had the shooting incident down at Viewpoint and, you know, we're still trying to get everything put together on that. And that in and of itself has been a huge task. It's just nonstop. I don't know what's going on right now. You know, I was out last night helping take calls because we were just so busy, we just couldn't.
Well, the day before there was the Orem Macy's thing too, so it was just this boom, boom, boom.
The Everbridge alerts are good, thank you.
Yeah, I got a test one today, that was good.
Yeah, there's a scheduled test one. Did you guys know that?
I didn't know it was good if I got the, I got the text, that was good.
So you'll get that periodically just to make sure the system's up and running. And then we did the one down at Strawberry Point Four. And again, we had a incident that occurred at Viewpoint where there was a strong robbery. Suspects left on foot, our officer picked them up out by West Day Street, up and foot, chased and chased them through. It was in Strawberry Point and were able to get both suspects in custody. So we sent out a word on that because there was, there was some evidence that discarded through the central.
So Mike, do you include us in every neighborhood? Like if there, if you're doing one neighborhood, do you just include us?
So what we've done is Scott and I met on this and talked about it after the, the Everbridge alert up in the mayor's neighborhood on this walk call we had up there. The initial, the initial alert will go to the affected area. And for instance, I made sure this time when we. And for instance, um, I made sure this time, when we did the one to Strawberry Point, that it went to who we wanted to do. So on the, on the SWAT incident in the mayor's neighborhood, should've went to probably about two to three hundred residents and went to two hundred persons. Um, this, this one out at Strawberry Point went to two hundred and thirty-two residents. Um, so we send out the initial, and then we also have a group uh, that is the council and that we get Eric on that. So there will be a second one sent out just right after the first one, alerting the council as to what is going on. In case you aren't in the affected area when you start getting home calls or you know, you know.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It is.
That's the instruction. If, if, if something isn't going right on it, let us know and we'll keep tweaking it. The, compared to um, our old city watch, this one has been very effective um, when it's used properly. And it, you know, it was effective on the SWAT one, it went into thousands of people. Not as user error, just as.
So do you, do you still, do you have people that you uh, still need to get input into the system?
Absolutely, we do. Um, what we're doing right now is priority number one call that goes out is landline. Because we, you know, we can capture the landlines, we, those are in the system. Uh, unfortunately, there's a large amount of people who dump their landlines and just have a cell phone. So on those, if you have um, registered in the system, we have no way of getting ahold of you. And it, you know, it's good we use it for these things like um, one from the neighbor in the mayor's neighborhood, this one in Strawberry Point. Because I think as we do this, you'll get the talk amongst neighbors, well, if you hit that one, you hear, there's what are you talking about? Maybe we'll get some word out, people just want to register. Not that I want critical incidents happening in the city.
They're going to happen.
They're gonna happen, and we'll keep using the system and hopefully, as we go, our, our data base will just get bigger and bigger. We, we do need to do a few more um, public awareness campaigns and try to get someone to register in the system.
The other thing that was helpful, Mike, is this last one said, what can be shared, what can't be shared, and what to do with what you just shared. You know, like get it out on social media?
Yeah.
Those instructions were very helpful.
I'm making this all I say.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Sherry?
Um, we have, the same day as the fireman's breakfast, we have Fancy Nancy. So just a little later, so little girls can come eat breakfast and then go to Fancy Nancy. We're also in full-fledged planning.
I'm working on it right now.
Eric's wife is one of our employees. And she does fantastic work with our children's programs. And they are in massive planning gear for summer reading, um, which is um, going to be open.
During?
For registration.
Oh, May eighteenth.
May eighteenth, thank you. Um, so that's coming right up. That's a huge thing for the library. But we also have programs for adults and we don't talk about that very often, but we have um, on Thursday, a book group that has been meeting for years and years and years, and the average age is probably, what, eighty? And, yeah.
Well, signed, yeah.
Well, a very loyal group and they're all close friends now and, and they take turns leading the discussion and sometimes bringing snacks. And, you know, I, I love that we also serve that part of our population too.
Wonderful.
Um, Sherry and I are working on some friends at the library donation sponsors. Um, would you just share the, the number, what number did I say? Thirteen hundred or, no, I think it was, it was by, I, thirteen.
Never mind, go ahead and I'll, I'll.
So I'm, she asked how many people go into the library day? And we didn't have any idea until just a couple months ago, actually. So I don't have long-term data because we didn't have any people counter technology going on. So we spent a little bit of money and put one at the entrance and it just counts.
And I was just shocked, oh, here we go.
It counts every person that walks in.
So six, twelve thousand visits to the library per month, well, it's twelve thousand six hundred visits to the library per month.
There's just one entrance, right out, just one entrance?
Just, well, it, it counts that entrance and then we add the program counts from downstairs.
impressive, where's the elevator at? We're in process.
I have them meeting on Thursday, so I'll come again. We're all having next week.
Perfect. Anything else? Ken, Dean, or he left? Scott?
I laid my spread out of comments tonight.
Scott, I kinda like this side of you.
Do you wanna?
My wife does appreciate it.
Do you wanna, of the staff, I mean, the council, and where we are with the Hammond's uh, extension that the.
Yes.
Discussed, whatever that was.
So we, we have our handshake deal with Hammond's as of last November to extend the contract. Uh, talked with Tina today to see where we're at. We are, we, we have two other consultants that are helping us with information to make sure that we can protect our interests. And one of them in particular is just a little bit slow, so. Uh, we do have a sense of urgency that the dean sent the billing for the next payment, we're anticipating that, that'll get that to us here in the next couple weeks. Um, and, but we'd like to submit that agreement in front of you so we can get that adopted and, you know, extend that and just ensure that we can have those payments.
Anything else, Scott?
Yep.
Thank you. Must have a game or something tonight.
No. No.
Tina?
Uh, I'm kind of a Debbie Downer, not all. Uh, my prosecutor's last day was today. And I did hire uh, another part-time prosecutor and he uh, came today for just a couple hours to go to court and observe.
And then it's like, I'm done.
His first official day will be next to me.
First and last day.
He's gonna come in on, on Thursday afternoon and talk to Nico and just kind of get acting. My assistant's posting uh, didn't go well, so I had to repost for that. So I'm actually didn't have to use a pen for a little while until we can get through the advertising process and get somebody hired on that position. So that will not be fun.
So you're answering phones and?
Yeah, I had to sit at Tim's desk today and everyone who walked by did a double take and went, wait a minute.
Our new assistant?
And um, I used to do that, I used to do everything myself, but now that we've gotten so technologically advanced, it literally took me like an hour to type one information because I couldn't make the templates work and I had to just type it all. So I'm not a very good legal assistant anymore.
Tina, I can help you answer phones and I can do it in an accent, so it sounds more like an accent.
That's a lot of accent.
Kate, how's this? This is Tina's assistant, may I take your question?
Inquiry.
Inquiry, yeah, that sounds better.
Okay. Anything else?
We're working through it.
Okay.
Well, and for the long term, you're gonna need law staff. You know, we've been talking in the police department about the change in the felony misdemeanor, drug offenses and different things, so.
It's gonna be huge.
What do you expect, Dean? I mean, are we gonna?
Um, we don't, I don't have any idea about the key numbers. I'm, I'm hoping that the county can give us a little bit better understanding of that in the next couple months. They're gonna start uh, keeping track of what they would have sent us before the law goes into effect October one. But I'm anticipating that the justice court calendars will get extremely large. Cause they did all, away with all the drug-free zones, basically. So all those classes that used to go to district court will now be in justice court. So I would expect that we will have to expand our court calendars and have another day at court in order to um, handle that. And then also as well, because they moved all the felony possessions down to class A misdemeanors, I would anticipate that our class A misdemeanor load will go up. I'm not thinking that it will go up as much at the justice court. So I'm hoping that we've got a little wiggle room there in terms of union extra staff for district court, but we will definitely.
Well, doesn't that mean that, that stings and things that you guys perform when you take down these rings? They're gonna end up here then, instead of going to county?
A lot.
Some of them will.
Okay.
I think that part of that is, is the legal assistant right now is a full-time position, spends part of their time in community development. When this starts hitting, we'll need that position to be full-time helping too. So we, we are planning on that, that's gonna probably be sometime this fall. And then we'll have to work with community development on the person, you know, the time that's being spent for the assistant.
So we're talking about additional help for legal on prosecution and on legal assistant. We're talking about expanded courtroom hours. We're talking about additional transport or something.
That's where it goes the hardest, those are the transports.
And safety, right? Cause the, the level of crime now is increasing within the courtroom.
Well, it's, yeah, it's the same players that, you know, were looking at felony charges before and now in our city courtroom.
Yeah, you've got heroin, you've got heroin, you go in with, my dog got it, that's what you're gonna have.
Okay.
The trickle-down effect, unfortunately.
Okay.
We're kind of negative, but.
Anything else, Debbie Donna? Thank you.
And, and forget me, I think Ben could do, Ben, I mean.
I can answer phones.
Can you answer with an an accent?
I can't do accents, I'm just gonna say it.
You sound like you'll be what you cougar.
Just born to be. Take him?
Uh, just note they paved the parking lot of the radio.
Where? At where?
The rodeo ground.
It's great.
It's getting there. We would've, we need to pave five hundred south, but it cuts some power poles in the way.
Come down. Sure. All right. Kathy? Anything? Thanks for organizing all of this, that was good. Eric?
I already had my five minutes earlier, so.
Okay. Dion?
Um, no. What? What?
That was a qualified no.
Okay, okay, wait, okay, come back then. Um.
No, I was kidding.
Yeah. Uh, Strawberry Days is uh, has been a lot of fun. And uh, um, just really quick, Dion, what happened with, it, it, what's the progress with the concession stand? Any?
Walls are going in.
The walls are going in?
Putting in some foundation towards what we started today, planning will go tomorrow.
Wow.
Five-day bills?
This is like the, yeah, five-day.
You're on the five-day bill program, okay. Anything else? Ken?
I think I'm good.
Yeah, actually, I have a couple of things, I'm sorry. Um, where are we at with, we're talking about getting a water meter like Cedar Hills has on our website. So, and I'll, this was explained to the council last year, but on Cedar Hills website, they have this uh, digital water meter that showed where the city was at for that day. So the city uh, residents could go to the website and be able to show how much water was usage being used.
Yeah, so I'm working with Joan Shees and uh, what we, when we talked about it last year, he generally does um, a gen, a reading once a month on how much water we're using. For us to do that on a weekly basis or a daily basis, it's just gonna be some additional costs. So I, I asked him what that cost is gonna be, he hasn't given me that number.
Can we, can we get a deadline or goal, maybe like by next Monday?
I'm hoping, that'd be great, as soon as Joan gets back.
Maybe we just follow up with Joan. Because, so I'm turning on the news every morning and all it is about watering.
Water, yeah.
Um, so we'll follow up with Joan on that.
Yes.
Um, when is our discussion with the large water users? Cause I'm having residents ask, because they're not understanding what their days are. I know we discussed value of entry, so I contacted the principal of my kid's school. The custodian and principal have never been contacted this year, knowing when to water, how long, what days. So when is our discussion or notification to them?
So when I talk with Greg Woodcox, he is setting that meeting up, I don't know the when it is.
Okay.
And I don't know if he talks with each individual school or if he talks with the district and then they talk with the school.
Cause to me, that needs to be ASAP, because again, that's public perception about the law, that the large water users are watering non-stop all the time, there's no schedule, but then we're out to restrict and they're not getting fined. So can that be like an ASAP meeting?
Yeah, well, I, like I said, I, I talked with Greg about getting that down.
We'll, we'll follow up with him.
So I need to talk with Greg and find out when he's having.
Okay, and, and it's also churches, schools, and.
The two big ones are churches and schools.
Right, cause the business owners don't have like the large acreage, or at least a lot of them has.
Well, and a lot of them are even on the secondary water.
Okay, so churches and schools, so that's being taken care of hopefully ASAP?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and with that, there was a, I can't remember the city today, but a, as a resident spoke today and something I've heard um, um, from social media is they have their days, they can't water, but when they're watering, it's eight hours at a time. So I wanted to propose a time limit on watering because that's what another city had proposed, it was a thirty-minute time limit. So then just because they get to their day, now they're going all day long and there's no enforcement on that. So what can we do to?
How do, how, how would we enforce?
It would be more of like a neighborhood watch kind of thing, cause the neighbor that was on social media said they were on their day, they watered for eight hours.
So it'd be neighbor squealing on neighbor?
Well, that's how it is right now, though.
There's some of that right now. I mean, people can call in anonymously and say, the neighbor is watering um, on the wrong day or they're doing excessive watering and then we, we follow up and, and do that.
What, what is the follow-up on that? Is that the very, that's the first offense?
Yes, well, if we can verify it, then yes, that's the first one.
Yeah, I, I think, I'll, I think that what you're saying is absolutely important to do. What I'm concerned about is that there's the tendency to exaggerate, either over-exaggerate or under-exaggerate what's really going on. And the ability for the city in our current situation to measure that and verify it and enforce it is somewhat limited. We would have to actually send someone out there to monitor what's happening to be able to determine if the, if the violation was occurring. If, if it's that serious, then maybe an analysis between how much enforcement and uh, personnel versus moving to the metering. Uh, because the cost, I mean, there's a cost, like Mike said earlier. You know, when we talk about enforcement, it's not free. So if we're gonna do something, I mean, there, there's gonna be a cost.
Unless this is part of an education process where we do put a limit on it and we educate the public, that this is now what the new limit is. And that's part of the process as well, I mean, that's on the city website newsletter saying that, I mean, right now it's unlimited water, you could water twenty-four hours.
We have a rule about.
We do have, yeah.
Is there?
So there's already some, there's already something in place.
But, but what is?
If they're watering for eight hours and it's watering the sidewalk and running down into the gutters, that's a violation that can be enforced. And so there are already are some, some restrictions that can be monitored and cited for if somebody's overwatering like that. You can't water a yard for eight hours and not have, I mean, some, yeah, it's gonna be running down the gutters. The other idea I've kind of had while you were just discussing this is um, our animal control officer just implemented a um, a fairly new uh, idea that I think is going to be really successful. They get a lot of dog barking complaints and the officer goes out and the dog's not, doesn't happen to be barking and they can't do anything about it, but the neighbors have called in ten or fifteen times. So they have a new um, neighborhood certification sheet that they hand out to those people that say the date, the time, how long was the dog barking? And then they sign it as a witness so that if that person is cited, we have the, the testimony we need, the evidence we need to prosecute. We could do something similar, if you have certain individuals in the city who are, have these neighbors, that they're constantly complaining about overwatering, we could do something similar and let them fill the paperwork out, sign it as to being able to testify that, you know, they looked, looked at the clock and this is how long it was on. And then the burden kind of moves to them in terms of making them be um, part of the enforcement action instead of hiring extra people to patrol every neighborhood in the city to find those few people that are overwatering consistently.
And, and I like that, so, so my idea was um, not to hire the additional enforcement because that's a huge expense. But it would be to, like I said, start with proactive education about, we now have a time limit on watering. It's not just because it's your day, it's now a free-for-all and you get to water for two or three hours or eight hours, whatever it is. Because I think this means the exaggeration is gonna be, and I don't think we're, because if you drive by a house, you don't know how long the water's been on. So really, it, it's gonna become the same enforcement that it is now where it is a neighbor driving by or constantly in the sprinklers on, maybe it's a line broken, but it's something over education that says it's now, there's now a time limit on your day. Because there're not gonna be any more water, that, that's what this city did, I, and I can't remember what was on Fox thirteen today, but they have enforcement thirty-minute time limit, some cities are down to two, two, two days a week. So I just don't know if there was more steps we could take to increase the awareness and time limit because I think now people think, okay, well, I've missed a day, now I've gotta make up for it, so now I'm gonna water double or triple because I can.
It's a perfectly logical extension. It's a perfectly logical extension. I mean, I think that's what hap- what has happened. Um, switching them off of culinary and putting them on secondary with the promise in the beginning that there was, it's pretty much unlimited. That, that is running into direct conflict with what nature's providing. And until, until we all accept the fact that this is not a, an artificial enforcement, there's no water. That's the issue. Um, then I don't think we're gonna achieve the goal. I'm concerned or nervous about pitting neighbor against neighbor. That's very concerning to me.
And and I wouldn't advertise it that way. Know what I mean?
Yes.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, you know, there have been so many thoughts on this and discussion. We need to get back to the concept of what can we do to help the people understand how much water they're actually using? And how to help them control that and manage it themselves because it's in their own best interest. They're doing it willfully. I think metering is, is a potential solution to that.
But because we're years away from that, what can we do now this season to?
When we, when we discussed this as part of our long-term plan, um, the metering was down the road. And there were four steps that were involved. Part of it was from the, um, uh, Deon's group, the beautification committee. And there was also, um, from John Shees. I think there were several bullet points in there that addressed the, what you're talking about. And I think that we've already implemented and adopted the, um, the things that need to be done. Um, they're, they're just not implemented yet. It's the education and then it's taking down the amount of use and eventually evaluating the need for a metering system. Where the, the person can actually look at it and say, well, here's how much water I'm really using, you know, and that, that's helpful. I mean, I'm reading, I'm reading similar things that you are. It's like, uh, kinda we're watering the streets in the middle of whatever. And, and I think that we need to, we need to continue the education.
I, I think our contin- our education over the last two years have worked because we have seen our usage drop. From twenty thirteen to twenty, well, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, when John Shees, uh, showed us those charts. Now, it's been kind of a little. I mean, we're still using seven point, you know, five gallons per minute when we should be using three. But it was at one point, I think, over eight. And so we've seen that, but we're always gonna have these anomalies of people that just, it doesn't matter how much we educate, they're just gonna disregard because they can. And it either, we have to catch them in the act or somebody has to turn them in or whatever for us to go and to enforce them. I think we're seeing less of those as well, but they're still out there. And in my opinion, the long-term solution is metering. If we're ever gonna get back to three gallons per minute, it's gotta affect the pocketbook. But in the meantime, you know, we put the thing on our website, we, we continue to educate through the beautification committee. We have some other measures that we wanna do to work through that. But, I mean, really, we have a limited amount of water and I think most people are aware. I think people really clued in this year that there's not much water.
Said, I, I think you rea- you really are on to something. The kinds of comments I'm seeing now are people complaining about overwatering. It's not, we don't have enough water. It's not why are there restrictions? It's we have, why are, why is my neighbor watering forever? Why is it going all down the stream when we're in a drought? So I think the education is working. Um, and, and it's going to continue to become vocal like smoking indoors was, you know, you'd have thought. Uh, and so eventually it'll, it'll happen.
I guess what I was saying is, do we want to adopt something official that states the amount of time a person can water?
At this point?
On the day that they.
On, on their designated day.
Why don't we put that and have a discussion?
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, let's have a regular agenda.
Deon had a comment.
Sorry. You may wanna be a little cautious on that because some of the sprinkler heads that they do have out there are water-conserving heads. And some of them take forty-five minutes to water. Put down just a trickle amount, you know, less than a half hour quarter. So just saying, like Hill Park is all water-conserving heads. Rec Center is the same thing. Rest of water properly. We have to do a little bit more than half hour, but we'll do a lot less water.
Yeah, when I pull open my two-inch valve and just let it go, I expect a full half hour. Maybe we could make it part of a regular agenda?
That'll be great.
Scott?
We'll come next week.
And where are we at with the city water metering with putting the installing meters on the city buildings?
Yeah, Greg's working on that one as well. I don't have, I, I apologize. I don't have a hard day with all this gonna happen, but.
But, but I think that's what we need though, because now we're into first week in May and it's only gonna get hotter. And it's just, it's the public perception and it's what we're calling on water conservation. So, I mean, I think like this, like I said, first issue on the news when I turn it on in the morning is the water issue. We heard it tonight too from candidates.
Yeah.
It's the water issue.
Yeah.
So that's why I think it's high priority and we do need a date to get some of these things, talking to the big water users, getting the water meters up. Um, getting that, you know, the, the water indicator on the website.
I'll get some hard dates from Greg.
And I think the, the big water users are the biggest, you see it in any city. I mean, you know, I was visiting my daughter, oops, across the street from the school in the middle of a rainstorm. They put, you know, it's just that perception now, right now. And I think everybody is so aware of the drought, but not everybody is going to do something about it.
I agree with you guys. I think this is absolutely on, on most people's minds right now. Was there anything else you wanted to add?
One thing, the zoning in the Grove, where are we at with bringing that back onto the agenda, Scott?
Uh, I was looking at that today and really that's up to you guys on when you wanna.
Okay, next Tuesday.
You want next Tuesday?
Sure.
How long is it gonna take to do the interview things?
At least two hours.
Oh, it is, okay.
It's gonna, it'll be, it'll be on maybe late.
Tuesday after.
Keep next week, good.
Okay, we'll put it up for the lady.
And that's all.
That's good. Thank you. That was a lot. I don't mean that's good, we're done.
I know.
I mean, it's good what you brought up.
I'm not offended.
Good.
No, I don't have anything.
Thank you. Um.
Wait, wait, Ben. Oh, wait, wait.
Ben said, he's done. Good. Okay, um, do we have any kind of regulations in our city about these high-quality GoPro cameras on quadcopters? That are now flying in free space below four hundred feet drones? They're popping up. It's, uh, happening a lot. Um, I've seen footage of things that probably people don't wanna have footage taken. And I'm wondering what our positions should be. I know that the airspace is regulated by, what is it? FAA? But I think that, you know, Strawberry Days is coming up this summer. These things are now readily available. They're very inexpensive.
I'll have to look up, I, I honestly have not.
My knowledge of it is that for recreational purposes, people use it. The restrictions are on government, which will be commercial. So, you know, if we wanna do the same thing, residents should be too.
So, so here's, here's the concern. Strawberry Days is coming up. We're gonna have a parade. If, if the non-commercial use is as free as it is, I can see multiple quadcopters flying that parade route. And I'm just wondering if we're okay with that as a, as a city and if we have any ability to manage that.
Wow. I have never, I haven't.
But I mean, that.
I see a lot on Facebook. Yeah, I see posts on Facebook of people that have taken pictures, not if anything inappropriate. But you can see where that, that would get totally out of control.
Just for your reference, national parks, there's an issue with this. And so that might be a record for Tina to see if there's some already in Utah with regards to national parks and those. Okay.
And they, they don't let, they don't allow them?
It's being disputed.
Tina, can you look into this?
But it's an invasion of privacy.
Cause I think it's gonna come up. We're gonna get requests for permission. And I'd rather have an answer rather than go, I don't know, and then.
Are you saying a city event, city property, like what are you, just the rule in general?
At the moment, the way I understand it, if it's just for recreational use, they can fly anywhere they want.
But even if this is coming in.
Restricted airspace, airspace.
Okay.
So right now, uh, just a hobbyist with a quadcopter can fly that thing anywhere under four, five hundred feet, anywhere.
Okay.
Your backyard, anywhere.
They can spy on you?
Well, whether they're spying or not, I mean, we're talking about.
If I'm in my backyard gardening, in my gardening outfit.
Now, that was a visual at this discussion.
No, but you see what I mean?
No, I don't see anything. Orin?
What I was referring to is that has a re- that's an invasion of my privacy.
Please.
So. So I can see, so like if, if I'm at an event and somebody takes a photograph with me and they want to publicize, publicize that. They have to get my written permission. We would make a lot of money to publish that. But if somebody's flying over my backyard and, and, or in any other situation, they're not gonna come to me and get my permission to put that up on Facebook. So I can see that this.
Rodeos coming up. We've got fireworks coming up. These things are four hundred bucks or less. People are buying.
Common law protections if they're misappropriating your image, but if they're going over a property line too, that's a trespass, isn't it, of the common law at least?
It's still not in airspace.
You don't own the airspace.
Gone across a property line. That's trespass too, isn't it?
So.
On the air side. If you want to see, you know, the cities are using some of these and going asking their current businesses for economic development process. If you look at some of the cities that have some pretty flashy videos of, of course, they went to their, their most prominent businesses and asked, can we do a flyby? You know, can we promote you and can we also put this out there to promote our economic development? So there are some positives.
Yeah, I'm just saying that we should have some kind of.
There's gonna, I look, we can research it. I would guarantee there's case law out there. I know they're being used. I mean, for instance, you look at some of the rioting stuff that's being, that's happening in our nation right now. They're being used to, um, tactically to get police officers or physicians into maneuver rioters and positions and overwhelm the police. So I know there's gonna be, there's gonna be case law. There are already agencies that are facing what you're asking, so.
Oh, this is my concern for there. Are you, are you saying the concern is invasion of privacy for residents? Or is it that a business would profit off, uh, like a public event with residents in it for their own? Like what, I guess what's, what's, what's the main?
I'm saying that mom, dad, uncle, whatever goes and buys a quadcopter for their nephew, niece.
Yeah.
And the next thing you know, you have this thousand-dollar quadcopter with a GoPro camera cruising at head, at head height across the Strawberry Days parade. And, and multiples. And I'm just thinking that we oughta, we oughta be looking at this before it becomes an issue. We know the FAA is involved, but they are five hundred feet ceiling. So what about down here? I can talk to you later if you need some information. Okay, thanks. All right, um, any other business?
Yeah, how come nobody said the Jimmy John's was open?
Oh, I meant to say that, yes, they opened today.
Well, it's gonna be closed.
All of my business is waiting.
So are, are they doing a red ribbon or?
No, they're not. They're just.
A red ribbon. A what? Oh, they're not good.
We can get a Jimmy John's right after this meeting, right?
Right after we finish. All right, um, I don't have anything else, so motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. Jimmy John's?
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Good discussion.